It's on, it's on.
So I guess the rhetorical question, does this have anything to do with it, not being your Friday, but the 13th in October? Anyways, thank you for your patience, I really do appreciate it. Thanks for shuffling around with us, little bit of a scheduling snafu, but welcome to the planning board. We have a few quick orders of business to take care of at this point, and then we're going to proceed to the public hearings. If you're here for... Are you giving me a second? Give me a second. And as quickly as I bring notes. Eight zero three five was it?
Um, it was thirty five sixteen. Oh, eight zero three six.
Okay.
Is for thirty five King Street. For the ANR.
No, 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 no. What was removed from the agenda?
Oh, thirty five dash sixteen.
Alright, so if you're here for thirty five dash sixteen, see click LLC, that is going to be withdrawn from the agenda, and we'll deal with that on a separate basis. But, just to make it a little bit easier for you. All minutes intact?
Yeah. Except for the first one, which I said...
So, board members, we have an agenda before you at this point, and I'd love to make a motion to move said agenda.
This is a move.
And seconded discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. You have minutes from August eighth, September 12, and September 28th. Are there any errors or admissions as submitted?
No.
Okay, and do I hear a second? Second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. So, we've kind of changed the way we do our ANRs, our second dwellings, previous plans, tertiary dwellings, to a consensual agenda at this point, which hopefully will start to speed things along, because this is our first night doing it, so do bear with us a little bit. It will give me the ability to skip around, as such, so there are three things under second dwellings, EJ Harvey fifty six A who performed road, EJ Harvey fifty six B who performed road, and Duncan and Delphine Winter twenty six Monahassett Road. Mr. Markinter, I believe you called those out for us?
I think it was Greenleaf, not Monahassett. The two Hooper Farms and Greenleaf.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yes.
Alright, I'm so sorry. Alright, so you've got, you've got the floor there, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against those, because they weren't prepared by somebody with a proper license, so...
Alright, duly noted. Is there any other discussion on those three?
No, nothing really.
Anything else from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, you're going to approve three second dwellings, Mr. Markinter had concerns, they were isolated out.
I know, but just hang on a second. I asked earlier why we are not doing the ANRs on the agenda.
Because we've moved, we've moved to a consensual agenda.
I know.
Alright, so what I need to do is basically, follow my, follow my lead, trust in me and follow my lead for a few more...
Well, I want to know what the hell's going on.
Trust in me and follow my lead for a few moments, it'll begin to make sense.
It's not.
Would anyone else care to make a motion to approve tho- those three that Mr.?
Why just those three?
Can I, just work with me for a second, it'll make sense a little bit.
Well, I can't, I'm having a hard time voting on stuff, and I don't know what's going on.
Alright, Linda, the, the, the... The concept behind consensual...
I know what it is.
Then why are you having a problem?
Because why aren't we doing the, the ANRs first, all at once, like we always do?
Because, because Linda, instead of, instead of getting, instead of getting upset with me, the ANRs, the second dwellings, the tertiary dwellings, and most of the previous plans are going to be moved to one vote by this board. That's it.
Well, some previous plan is not.
Right, there's one previous plan that we're going to have to discuss separately, but the balance of them, they're all going to be brought into one vote. What I need to do for anything that, that is a problem, I need to isolate, just like we used to under each one, I need to isolate those out.
Well, I can't sit on a couple of the ANRs.
Alright, but, okay, and I understand this is new for us, and I'm prepared for the bumps in the road. In the future, when Catherine sends that out, you need to identify for her in advance which ones are problematic.
Well, I didn't know we were doing it this way, as opposed to all the ANRs at one time, which is consent, basically, and then all the secondary dwellings all at one time, which is what we normally do, rather than going out of order.
Okay.
That's it.
Sorry for the confusion. So let's take a vote on the second dwellings, Barry, please.
Just those three?
No, we're gonna take a vote on all of them.
No, we just said just those three.
Just those three.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, alright, alright.
This word gets confusing.
And then...
We're quoting those, just to...
I know.
Yeah, but we don't have to quote.
But we don't have to...
Oh, we're gonna take them separately?
Yeah.
Alright, alright, alright. Okay, so it's EJ's and the other one we're taking out.
It doesn't make any sense to do it this way, this isn't how the consents are supposed to go.
Green, green six to Greenleaf, Rogers.
Okay.
The one over there.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve, we're capped eight fifty Dukes Road, Winter.
No, no.
No?
Just the three.
I'll make a motion to approve Rogers and two Harveys. That's it.
Very good.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Trust me, you'll get used to this, it's, this is a...
No, it's not done the right way on the agenda, so that's what I'm saying. Go ahead.
We'll discuss this afterwards. Does that have been talked in our, you're, you're right, I'm wrong.
Well, it's not the easiest way to do this.
It actually is, when you get the hang of it.
Alright, John seconded it, Barry.
Thank you. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Would have been done with this already.
Oh, it's four to one.
I can't sit on...
Catherine, four to one.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Four to one. What can you not sit on, Linda, please?
Hawthorne.
Hawthorne, which is which number and what segment?
Eighty twenty-nine.
I thought we were doing the other.
That's what I'm saying, don't even ask.
Just, that's fine.
Don't ask.
Alright.
That's what I'm saying.
I got it.
Alright, the two of you... Settle down.
Well, we should have done this the other way.
You set, no.
But go ahead.
Settle down. This is not...
Do you make a motion on Hawthorne? Because I can't.
Alright, so for the record, Ms. Williams, we're accused herself from this. Do, is, is someone going to make a motion to...
I'll, I'll motion to approve eighty thirty-two Hawthorne Street.
Eighty twenty-nine Hawthorne Park, yeah, and second.
Oh, eighty twenty-nine, sorry.
Eighty twenty-nine Hawthorne Park, and do I hear a second?
Okay.
Motion's being seconded, is there a discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the ANRs, and the remainder of the secondary dwellings per staff recommendation.
And the previous plans, except for seven seven one six.
I thought there were two of them, no, there's two of them.
Yeah, ten fourteen, oh, I'm sorry, ten fourteen.
Twelve forty-two. And sixty-eight forty-two. That's what I'm saying, this is going to be a little bit more difficult.
No?
I don't.
Alright, 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 alright.
We just did it.
Alright, at the end of this meeting, at the end of this meeting, I'm going to do this back to the old traditional way, because even though I've talked to you guys, it's still causing a problem.
Well, we're not getting talked to, we're getting talked at, and we're still not comfortable with it.
Well, right, Linda, if you can't control yourself, then I'd probably suggest...
No, I'm just not comfortable with doing it this way. I, I love consent agendas, as everybody knows, but I, this is confusing.
Yeah, well, I, I'm going to probably say you don't love consent agendas, given the way we're doing it.
Because we would have been done with this already.
Alright, Linda, you've made your point, okay?
So you wanted us to make a motion?
You've brought up a major argument, the, the crowd's having to weather through this with you, and I'm really, and I'm really, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize.
So I already made a motion to approve the rest of the ANRs, the secondary dwellings per staff recommendations, and the previous plans, except for twelve forty-two Topland and sixty-eight forty-two Westmore Farms. Those appear to be the only two.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Twelve forty-two, which is Topland Properties.
Motion to hold for the next meeting.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Motion to hold Westmore Farms to the next meeting, I guess, is that the best place to go with it? Which, which of, when is that?
Eleven fourteen.
Eleven fourteen?
Second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. You have ZDA cases before you at this point, staff says there's no concern with any of these?
Mr. Chairman, they were in the meeting today.
Yes. Pardon?
They had the ZDA meeting today, but the first two were continuing, and the third one wasn't.
Okay.
Motion to make no recommendations, they don't present any issues of planning concern.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Ten fourteen, Nantucket Theater Institute, five North Water Street. Leslie, what do you have for us?
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Owen, no, for five North Water Theater Institute bathrooms.
He doesn't look like it rings a bell.
Do you want to start off the discussion, then?
The, the, just the application is, they installed some temporary bathrooms on the first floor.
Right.
Pending the elevator and some other things that had to get installed, put in the bathrooms that were kind of approved for the project in the basement, and now they've determined that the first floor bathroom actually is very functional and works well, and they'd like to keep it, and so they would like for you to approve that as not requiring a public hearing, and as being a minor modification to the project.
Motion to make a finding that it's a minor modification? You're just sitting there for the heck of it. Motion to make, to first say it's a minor modification?
Second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Motion to approve the modification, minor modification.
Yeah, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Guys, if there's a lot of chatter in the room, in this particular room, having spent a long time up here at DHDC, it will pick everything up, but they are not us. So, the chatter has to stay to a minimum, because we've tried to listen to the tape up here in this room, and it's very difficult. So where are we going now?
Next thing before us at this point, if you're here for seven seven one six, Flora Road subdivision, let's continue to eleven fourteen, that brings us to seven nine four six, Stephen Waterhouse, for the applicant, Reed, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Very, very well.
Good, come on down. Thank you, sir.
King is also here.
Come on down.
Talk about whatever we need to talk about.
Great.
Is this the approved method of addressing the board at this table?
Yeah, yes.
Stand up, sit down.
No, sit down.
Sit down.
Neil?
Jenny Fluck?
Jenny Fluck.
That's the part who's running it now, doesn't it?
But guys, guys, pull those microphones down towards you, it will not pick you up that far away.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience.
And thank you for your patience with us in connection with this application. We had, my clients and I had a very productive discussion on this last week with Leslie, and I think we have a clearer understanding of where we're headed with things at this point. We discussed, first of all, the concern that everyone had regarding certain uses, and of course, one problem is that my clients have not really developed a comprehensive strategy in terms of what they were planning to do with the lots. However, we agreed that there were quite a number of uses that would be permitted as a matter of right in RC, which we will have a zoning freeze upon the endorsement of the plan as being within, that really would not be appropriate in this location, or on, you know, property of this size, and so on. And I don't have the list here, but I think Leslie made the notes of it at the time, of the things that we specifically agreed, we can go through that if you want, or how if you want to handle it. The other thing was the width of the road, the subdivision roadway, the constructed portion of the roadway, and, which we had proposed at fourteen feet, and we are willing to agree to a sixteen-foot width, which I think under the circumstances, considering the small size of the subdivision, would be adequate. If we were to come back in with uses that were not contemplated, and, you know, we wanted to modify the decision by getting back some of the uses that we're giving up, then obviously the question of making more improvements would be perfectly appropriate. But in terms of what we're proposing to do, and the things that we've given up, it would be my suggestion that sixteen feet would be adequate to serve the needs, we're also providing an easement within the lots. I'll refer to the discussions about additional plan work, drainage calculations, and so on, that we can provide on the plans that will be submitted for endorsement after, after, after the hearing. It's just a question of providing the materials, so it's plans showing the specific materials that Ed Pesci had suggested, and that he and Leslie have requested.
Okay. Leslie, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, so unfortunately, in the chaos of the meeting relocation, I've left the list behind, but I believe what we agreed to, or what the Waterhouses agreed to, was essentially restricting all of the more commercial industrial uses that would have been allowed in RC, that wouldn't be allowed in commercial Mid-Island, and then they also agreed to restrict bars and taverns, I think, supermarket, and...
Gas well plants?
Those things, of course. Now, the things that are left in that are allowed in the commercial Mid-Island District, you know, restaurants, retail, offices, those types of uses, of course, all of the residential uses are still left in, so while the sixteen-foot wide road is an improvement over what was proposed, I mean, I still have some concerns that that's not wide enough, maybe eighteen feet, if you're going to have commercial in there, but that's something we all need to talk about.
You know me.
Okay, great. Any thoughts based upon what staff mentioned, Mr. Reed?
Again, I think, I, I, we think that sixteen would be, would be adequate, I don't think we have any other issues with anything that we discussed.
Thank you. Board members, go ahead.
Eighteen feet is excessive, frankly. If we're ruling out some of these heavy, heavy uses, they're not going to have a split axle in there. So I think eighteen feet is crazy, considering that some of our most heavily trafficked roads are eighteen feet, maybe twenty at the most, and we've been requiring, for heavier residential use, we've been requiring sixteen feet, so I'm not willing to carve out eighteen feet and have it look like some sort of a boulevard. I'm happy with sixteen feet. What's the layout, though?
Layout is twenty, isn't it, Teddy?
Twenty, twenty, or ten foot east.
The ten foot east.
Yeah, so I mean, if sixteen feet somehow, if you get a split axle in there, as opposed to a box truck, or UPS truck, and they're having trouble negotiating, we're going to have to, they've got enough to widen the road again if it proves to be a problem, if a use goes in there that just can't handle it, but I don't want any more than sixteen feet cut there. That's just me, but otherwise, I've been okay with this all along, so long as Ed Pesci's okay with the drainage and all that stuff.
Well...
He doesn't have a report.
He doesn't have a report, because they're going to have to redesign it.
The whole thing?
Get a little wider.
So is it something we can decide tonight, so we can get them out of here?
Yeah.
And then, subject to Ed Pesci's comments about the drainage and whatnot?
Yeah, and I think that's a standard condition that you should put in, but I also think you all should think about, you know, the idea of widening the road, if they want to have more intense uses, or if there's a problem, who's going to pay for that, who's going to do it? The developer will be gone at that point, I mean, I don't think the association will do it, and if it's a by right use, then how do we...
I think eighteen feet is going to look crazy over there.
So this isn't a special permit?
Yeah.
No.
It's a regular AR.
AR subdivision.
So we don't have the ability to reopen it?
Not really, no. If uses are proposed by right, then there's no review over access.
But what I said is that the uses that we're giving up would be conditions of the decision.
Right.
If we wanted to get any of those uses back...
We'd have to reapply.
We'd, we'd have to file for amendment and come back before the planning board for, for a hearing on that.
You're running soft uses, basically.
Soft uses.
It's a UPS truck.
The, the only thing that's not soft is just the Waterhouses continuing their existing business so long as they're there, but after that, that type of use would go away.
Yep.
So, Leslie, could you just, fair, run through the list of uses that are left on it now? Because I think that, hey, I hate to put you on the spot there.
That's okay, so just off the top of my head, restaurants, so up to seventy seats.
Yep.
That's pretty intense.
Yeah, yeah.
Retail uses, requires significant amount of parking.
Mm-hmm.
Office use, they can have apartment building, they get commercial with apartments above or below. Duplexes are allowed under RC, primary, secondary dwellings are allowed under RC, I think you'll need to keep in mind, this isn't a residential subdivision, it's a commercial subdivision, or mixed use subdivision, and that standard, I think, should be a little higher than this residential subdivision. And tertiary dwellings are allowed now. Well, actually, no, they're not allowed.
Do they need to come back for an MCD for any of those uses?
Well, it depends on if it triggers.
If it triggers, there's, so there's potential for that.
Well, the problem with that, we've run over this before, that lots are only five thousand square feet, and they're sort of self-limiting, because they can't get the required parking if they went to an MCD, or some big, or some big humongo thing, so they're sort of limited to smaller units to provide the parking, which would engender less of an, an impact in there.
The only way you got an MCD is if you have a single, a single user putting, putting Humpty Dumpty back together again, and using it as a single parcel.
Put them all back together.
Which could happen, but, and in that situation, you've got plenty of opportunity to look at it and impose appropriate conditions.
I, I mean, I don't think the difference between sixteen and eighteen is that, is it a financial burden, is that the issue?
No, it's a visual, and it's, it's gravel.
Can I answer for that, please?
It's gravel.
Thank you.
He was asking me what my problem was.
No.
It's gravel.
I think, I think he was asking Ms. Reed.
Well, first of all, we think, we, we think it does look like, you know, a, a, a pretty major cut to come in that way with eighteen, and yeah, we, we, we're not crazy about spending extra money.
I don't think we have an eighteen-foot wide gravel road.
Are we still talking about gravel?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's been all along.
That's what I'm saying, eighteen feet of gravel is more gravel than I've seen just about anywhere here. Certainly not in Mid-Island.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
In, in our meeting, I thought we talked about pavement.
Well, it still says gravel.
I didn't, I didn't real, I, I didn't think there was any discussion of favor.
It's gravel in the Mid-Island, is odd, but eighteen feet of gravel.
I was under the impression we talked about widening the road and paving it, because of the commercial businesses, it would still be allowed. It's in the Mid-Island, on Sparks Avenue.
Yeah, I, I thought it was going to be paved, too.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm set, I'm fine.
Anyone else?
I'm okay with the sixteen-foot wide, I think the size of the lots are going to really limit the use, because depending on what you do there, you're going to have the required parking that you're going to have there here, too. I think if we could just work out if it's going to be gravel or pavement, I'm okay with everything else.
Thank you.
Fourteen-foot, Teddy, you said thirteen-foot wide grave driveway, you forgot the L.
It's very, very grave. It's a grave matter.
It's a grave driveway. That's for lots that way.
So, gentlemen...
I think we need to, go ahead, I mean, I think they're going to end up probably having to come back with all these different questions, don't you think? I mean, I don't know, I thought it was going to be paved, too. I wasn't even thinking of gravel in Mid-Island, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Am I the only one who read the plan?
So...
I just assumed it was going to be paved, I mean, I wasn't thinking about gravel on Sparks Avenue, you know what I'm...
And there's no apron, there's no apron here either.
So...
I mean...
Well, it's not on the plan, I can't find it on the plan.
It's just, I understand what they're trying to do, like, trying to keep it the same, but make it be something else, I, I get that, I just...
Hang on, Paul. Yeah, man, what are we going to do?
He's going to go talk to Steve.
Just wait a second, just wait a second. Let Mr. Reed confer.
Teddy, if it's gravel, you've got to put the apron on. Oh, I'm looking at the one on my screen, I'm looking at this one.
Maybe we should have said that.
Well, hang on, let me go one more. I'm looking at the subdivision plan. I'm still looking for that plan, I don't have it.
I just want to talk.
No. Holly, I don't have that one.
Mr. Reed?
I have three others.
We just took about a hundred thousand dollars out of my client's pocket, but we'll agree to pave it if it's sixteen feet.
I'm not, I...
So, alright, let me do this. Alright, I'm, I would really, let's break this down into two decision bases at this point. First one is, is it going to be gravel or asphalt? From this board.
Good with asphalt.
I'm okay with gravel, as long as it's not eighteen.
Ken, so Mr. Markinter?
I, I think it should be asphalt.
Alright, Mr. Lowell.
Like, there's nothing else gravel over there, in that area, I mean, it's, that's my, I mean, I know that that's not, that's expensive, but that's...
So...
I mean, a gravel, a gravel driveway over there for future businesses, I mean, listen, unless that...
What about the first twenty feet of it, fifty feet of it?
Yeah, I mean, the apron coming in, maybe longer than what the standard apron is, something like that.
We could do that.
You know, like, I don't want to say twenty feet, whatever the right amount is, but not a traditional apron of ten feet in, you know? You don't want, you don't want anything to do with this, causing anything out in the road, you know, runoff, like we have a botlet and other places like that, you know?
So, you're saying, what, first fin, ten feet is more than ten?
More than ten.
Looks like it's fifteen.
Can I speak to Mr. Lowell?
Whatever the, you know, I don't know exactly how much to say should be paved, but certainly not the typical apron.
So...
Forty-three feet.
About forty feet.
So, Mr. Lowell suggesting a combination, Linda?
I'll go, the lot line, it looks like, Teddy, I can't quite tell, it looks like it's forty-three feet in.
Into a, with the lot one.
In the first lot, width of lot one would be only forty-three feet, not the whole thing. I think that's right where that shade is. Up there, looks like it's where the shade is. Split the difference.
Yeah, I'm fine going to first lot line.
Comes in, lot one comes in forty-three feet plus the rounding curve coming in from Sparks Avenue.
To the end of lot, to the, back lot line of, the southerly lot line of lot one, and then the rest is state gravel.
The, the point where lot one and lot two meet, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Approximately fifty-three feet.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so, this, this, the two of you have been conferring back and forth here, so the two of you, what, looking at fifty-three and the rest gravel to the back?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm happy with the compromise, Barry.
Uh, you know, I haven't even spoken yet, and you guys are getting way ahead of me because I'm, I'm.
I'm just changing my, from the original pavement, I'm, I'm just stating that I'm happy with the compromise of fifty-three feet.
Okay, but I, I really do just wanna say something, I'm not, I think the whole thing needs to be, I think you need to do asphalt in here. I think getting away with sixteen feet is incredible, but here's my problem is that we don't know what's gonna wind up on the inside. This has been a problem with me since day one with this application. And it's taken us this long to finally concur that it's really not gonna be residential, it's gonna be primarily commercial in nature. So I, and you're, you're sitting right on top of Sparks Ave. One of the busiest streets in Nantucket at this point. So I think if I had a heck of a lot clearer sense about how this was all gonna go, fine. But you, as a board, only have one opportunity to really do this short of if they go back in and re-subdivide the lots. So I'd like to get it right on the first try because there ain't gonna be a second try like a special permit. So that's my feeling is that I'd like to see you guys, um, will probably say sixteen feet because of, because of what's there. In terms of your lot sizes. But I'm not feeling like I wanna do anything else, given where it's gonna intersect onto and, again, not having a better feel for what's happening in there. That's my two cents.
Comment? Yeah. I'm not talking about Huber Farm Road. I'm not talking about the Badlands, I'm not talking about Boulevard. I'm talking about the middle of the commercial district. We've got little things going all over the place in the Mid Island. Saying there's gonna be a massive impact on Sparks Avenue, any more than the Stop and Shop, the Boys and Girls Club, whatever's gonna go on over there on the Craig property, which isn't gonna be small. We're talking about a small, three lot subdivision, and it could be that somebody buys two of the lots, they need more space. They did that in Coffin, they did out in Coffins Pit, nobody bought one lot, they all bought multiple lots. I foresee maybe that's a possibility here as well, because they're gonna want the parking. And sixteen feet wide is, I'm comfortable with sixteen feet wide if they wanted to go, if it would be, make everybody more comfortable. If the first fifty feet was eighteen feet wide, and then the rest was gravel, as opposed to paving, that would get us halfway through it.
I'm gonna agree with Barry, I think we should be paved the whole way. Sixteen.
And are you gonna go, all right, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Mark and John, are that, Mr. Trudell, I think you've, wanna stay with what?
Oh, I'm, I'm happy with the sixteen feet and the fifty-three feet extended into the, into the road.
Also, just, I'm familiar with the size here, and I, again, respectfully, I just agree, Barry, but the size of the lot, five thousand square feet, the building that you're going to build for the use is going to limit the available parking.
And I think the gravel would be okay in the back, I'll still go with my original.
I'd just respectfully say back, it's not always necessary to park, it's also turnaround that you have to start thinking about as well too. You know, how much, not, again, not having a sense, it's how much, we may have quick turnaround times in there if it's like a smaller convenience store or something, you don't. You know, I know Columbus is right down the street.
Well, I own a convenience store, so I'm familiar with the size of the lot, it was five thousand square feet.
Right.
And we were required for turnaround for the parking to come back twenty-four feet and make that, that turn to pull out. So I'm guessing that the parking would be, be very similar to this particular instance.
Okay.
I may, I think it's also entirely possible that there'll be residential uses on this property, particularly on the two back lots. I mean, if I had, I mean, my clients literally are not developers, they're, they're dealing with this for family and financial reasons. And they, they, in all honesty, I mean, we're not trying to, to hold anything up our sleeve. We literally don't know what's gonna wind up happening ultimately with this property, other than they need to do something. If I had to predict based upon my conversations with them and my knowledge of the property, and without there being anything, not even cast in stone, really developed as a plan. I think that the most likely thing that would happen would be that the front lot would be some commercial use. The back lots would most likely be residential use. Unless the owner, unless the developer or, you know, user of a commercial business on the front lot wanted, in fact, and needed in connection with what he wanted to do, more, more ground, in which case, he might very well buy one or both of the back lots. I think that's probable, I don't, I think that the front lot has the benefit of, from a commercial standpoint, of having its frontage on Sparks Avenue. I'm not sure that there'll be other, it's likely that there'll be other businesses that wanna go in on those back lots behind it. Exactly what will happen though, I cannot definitively tell you because I don't know.
Do we need three, three votes for?
Three votes.
Okay.
So, can I just ask you a quick question then? Would you be willing to restrict the back lot to residential owners?
Well, it's just not fair at this point, particularly in the light of the fact that someone might wanna buy all the lots.
And I understand that, and there we are again, back with the quandary where a developer could come in and totally resequence everything you've just talked about. So, without those, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I've sat through enough planning board meetings as well, where I've been promised a lot of things from, from various, from various clients and attorneys. And the moment someone else comes in, the, the slate is completely rewritten. And there we go, that opportunity goes out the door with it. So, again, you know, respectfully, I'm just saying, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think for the better part of wisdom, I think if that's what you're going before this board as one member, I'd like, I'd like to see you put that commitment to it.
Okay.
So, that brings, so, Leslie, there's.
Can I ask her a question?
Yeah, please.
What triggers an MCD?
Four thousand. Well, there's a lot of variables, but it's a restaurant, it has to have twenty more seats. It's a commercial use, it has to be four thousand or more square feet of commercial area. And you can get around an MCD, for example, there's a business that requires a lot of parking over on West Creek Road.
Yeah.
And they have very few seats, but a lot of open space where people can stand inside, so it didn't trigger that higher level of a move.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, you can think about things like that that are happening there as well.
And what would trigger coming back, reapp, reapplying?
Any of those uses that are off the list.
Any of the uses that are off the list of RC or CMI?
Off the list that we agreed to, because those will become conditions of the decision.
Right, but under CMI, we're kind of like making the CMI, even though it's frozen up, like we did with Don't Do It, that kind of thing.
Uh, most of the commercial uses would be allowed by right, so they wouldn't be coming back to a planning board for review. So, an office is allowed by right, restaurants are allowed by right.
Retail.
Retail's allowed by right, personal services are allowed by right.
All will traffic generators, okay. A restaurant, but a restaurant would trigger an MCD though?
No.
Only if it has twenty or more seats.
Twenty or more. So a takeout wouldn't be triggering an MCD?
By itself, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, it will be, yes, absolutely. So, anything else, board members?
What, is there any outstanding issues other than?
Pesci.
The roadway width and, and waiting for.
We're gonna do Pesci.
And waiting with Pesci review.
Yes, and that would be a condition.
Yeah. Anything else, board members? All right, so, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, anyone want to comment on this?
Motion to close a public hearing.
All right, do I see a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, pleasure of the board at this point.
Motion to approve with first fifty-three feet paved to sixteen feet. And Ed Pesci's review. And the list that you guys have agreed to, Leslie, is there anything else? Okay.
So if you're all clear on motion at this point?
Second.
No, it's okay, it was already made and seconded.
It was?
Was?
No, I'm sorry, you were just bringing up the condition, so the motion is made and seconded, discussion?
Hold on, Leslie.
Yeah, please, sorry, Leslie.
I just wanna make sure your motion includes the standard conditions by homeowners association and all the.
The usual stuff.
Sorry. So you're still blocking, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
None.
Pardon?
I'm opposed.
So am I, so that'll be a three to two vote at this point. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, next thing before us at this point is, this will just be short and sweet, thirty-five dash sixteen, which was Seckle LLC. Uh, that was withdrawn, we just need to officially accept the withdrawal at this point.
Motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Thank you, enjoy your second.
Thought we already did that, no?
No, 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 I was just letting the crowd know, that's it.
I'm recu- accused, David.
All right, noticed that, Mr. Mark, it's.
I seconded, so.
Yeah, that's okay, so the motion's made and seconded, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously with Mr. Mark, you're accused, thank you. Next thing before us is fifty-one dash sixteen. I'm sorry, Leslie, you also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so fifty-one dash sixteen, which is one trot, twenty-three, twenty-five, Tomahawk Road. Mr. Bratcher.
Take it short and sweet, you're moving the handicap space.
Good evening. For the applicant, turn each other over.
Hello, John, welcome.
They couldn't even get to it.
Nice and cozy.
Yeah, can we let him?
Um, as Ms. Williams mentioned, the gist of this application is that they are requesting a sixteen by twenty handicapped accessible space, and in doing so, and in doing so, excuse me, need to reduce the aisle width to nine feet. Um, I believe there is a chain link fence that is preventing it from being any wider. Um, it's Billy Built Automotive, we're not exactly expecting a lot of traffic going in. And the permit was approved pursuant, back in special permit number forty-two fifteen, all the other conditions would remain in full force and effect. Basically, we're just looking to, for the reduction in the aisle width and a change in the site plan.
Yep, go ahead.
I don't believe this base has to be sixteen by twenty, I believe it's fourteen by twenty, eight foot with a six foot aisle width.
Okay.
So, you don't need to have sixteen, I believe that's too large.
Okay.
For the handicap space, which will give you another two feet on there, because I'd looked at it before with Andrew.
Okay.
Which gave them over ten feet, and the thing was fourteen feet wide, so just check that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think sixteen is not, you don't have to have sixteen. For the van accessible, just check it.
Sure.
Leslie, have a subconscious assurance with staff, did you want?
Um, well, yeah, now I have a, it's a different question, so, all of your required.
I already went through this with Andrew.
Is in the back, behind the chain link fence?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Because really our concern was people accessing the parking, but it seems like they can't access it, so how does it work? So they come to the.
They come, they drop, drop the car off, and then that's where the cars are, yeah, they leave and that's where the cars are stored.
That's what he does, man.
Where they park while, while someone's dropping off?
I believe that, that would be under the first concrete apron in front of the door.
Okay, so you can actually widen out at nine feet to eleven?
I'm pretty sure.
We'll, we'll check to make sure.
Because I've had to deal with this thing before, and I looked at it with Andrew, and we thought it was fourteen feet wide, eight and six, and then that would give you over ten.
Sure.
And I think that's where we ended up last month.
Okay, board members? Is this a public hearing?
Yes.
It will be.
I, I wasn't sure if I was.
Yeah.
My, I'm out of.
Do you, uh, do you have anything now?
No, sorry.
Joe?
No, fine.
John?
Nope.
Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on this. Leslie, I have a question for you, I don't see anything happening, do you think we need to wait another month on this till you get those parameters confirmed, or are you pretty good to go?
Good to go.
All right, good. So. Go ahead.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, John. John?
So that brings us to fifty-two sixteen, which is City Electric Supply Company, contract purchaser in five T's, dead circle. Gentlemen, good evening. Yeah. Thanks.
You're?
There's something new coming at me.
Here, Mark, yeah, Mark.
Well.
Oh, I remember this. I assume my, I assume my signature is on the ZB decision.
So this is, um, Kate, like.
Oh, thank you.
Is this Annie's?
Yeah, no.
No, it's, uh, Tompkins.
Tompkins.
Oh, Tompkins.
Is anybody just the big one? They just bought the big one, right?
They owned the whole thing.
If you're looking at it from the road, the one on the right. Well, it hasn't closed yet, but.
Yeah, not the store, the warehouse.
Steven Cohen and Paul Santos for the applicant, I'll, I'll give you a brief overview. This building, uh, at five T's, it was built in eighty-nine, ninety, uh, it's slightly less than four thousand square feet, and it was built as a warehouse, um, with the idea that after that, uh, and at the time in, in RC two when it was built, that warehousing was required, um, a special permit, which was issued. And then they went back later to get, uh, what was called casual retail, which is not something that exists in the zoning code, but was permitted actually in a couple of locations in this area.
That was not my language, I had to put that word in there when I wrote that decision.
Anyways.
Anyways, um, and what they did was they allowed a certain amount of retail sales, uh, with the idea that there would be no advertising or, um, sign, but that they could still have a little sales area and customers, but it was primarily a warehouse. That was fine until two thousand and thirteen, when the zoning code was organized and the nude use was added to the use chart, they created something called bulk merchandise retail, which most of you probably have never heard of, uh, including Marcus Silverstein, when we walked him through it, had never heard of it. So, the problem with bulk merchandise retail is that it's actually not allowed in RC two, although you could have, you know, an asphalt matching plant, but not, uh, bulk merchandise retail. Um, and of course, it's a little strange because retail is allowed by right, so it doesn't really, we're not really sure why, but, um, we're not trying to get a.
It wasn't invented yet.
So, what, what we're asserting here is that the, um, facility essentially operates, if you read the definition of bulk merchandise retail, it's a facility that is primarily a storage facility that has a small retail component that sells things. Um, the, in the examples that are given in the bylaw are furniture stores, electrical supply houses, plumbing supply houses, and those kind of things, and this obviously is an electrical supply house. And in fact, I would just argue that it's retail, and we don't really know what the difference is, except that electrical supply house is one of the examples in the definition of bulk merchandise retail, so it's hard to argue that it doesn't qualify. We're, so we're asserting that it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and then it, um, was validly in place under the special permits that existed in the nineties, and then in two thousand and thirteen, that bylaw change made it a pre-existing non-conforming use. And so we are seeking a modification of that use, um, and a slight expansion of it, um, and a, some alterations to the existing conditions. And I'll, I'll just go through the, and, and also that the change is likely taken into an MCD, so we have to deal with some waivers for that. So, the, um, building would essentially remain the same in terms of, of footprint, but we would do some alterations to the insides, that there would be, uh, some different access points, which I don't know if the board really cares that much about, and we would have a slightly larger retail and, and office area. Uh, there's no, um, uh, residential use planned at, at all. So, we would, uh, you know, move, there's a plan that's been submitted that shows where the doors are now and where they would be moved to, and we could go through that if you, if you care for that detail. But essentially, we would be having a slightly larger office and retail space inside, and also a, um, some exterior storage, uh, in the back. And I think, um, Paul has submitted an overlay with the, um, GIS, and I think it shows that, uh, if you look next door, there's, um, Santos Trash, there's a cement form, uh, business, there's, uh, Glenn's Marine Boat Storage, there's, I think it's Plumber Supply, um, with their fairly substantial exterior storage. Uh, there's Yates Gas, there's another electrical supply and plumbing supply house that's not shown, that's just around the corner. So, you know, the, um, area that is suggested for exterior storage here is certainly not going to be, uh, you know, ruining, uh, the neighborhood, in fact, it's, uh, consistent with the neighborhood and would be relatively small compared to the exterior storage and use on, on other lots, which are much more substantial than, than we're proposing. We had originally sought, uh, a substantial amount of waivers based on the idea that the plan was still development, developing at the time we submitted the application, uh, and I don't think that we need all of them. Uh, we asked for an open space reform waiver, but the bylaw only requires twenty percent, and we're currently showing twenty-eight percent, uh, with the idea that that entire exterior storage area is not counted as, um, open space. We likely would end up having slightly less when we find, when we, if we find tune the parking and add a little path to the back, but at, at twenty-eight percent, we have, uh, a lot of wiggle room to, before we would need a waiver. We are asking for a waiver for inclusionary housing, uh, we don't believe that it's an appropriate space to have, uh, housing, uh, given, given the use. Um, it's not inappropriate, but we just don't think that it adds anything to add, uh, housing to this lot. We were originally asking for a waiver of the off-street parking and aisle width, but, but, I don't think we need it, we're, we're able to provide, is it nine parking spaces, Paul?
Yes.
Nine parking spaces, which is more than is required, and we're able to have, uh, that parking, uh, we, do we make it all conforming to aisle width and everything?
Well, the only thing, uh, for the record, Paul Santos, Nantucket surveyors, we do have that thirteen foot wide coming, as you're coming in, so I think we still may need, we do have the, the twenty feet at the parking spaces, but as you come in by the two parallel spaces, it does neck down, so we may, we may be safe having that waiver stay in place.
Yeah, I'd ask, maintain those waivers, and we were trying to work with the existing paved area, but there's certainly an opportunity to sort of slide that parking, uh, is it? And we were trying to work with the existing paved area, but there's certainly an opportunity to sort of slide that parking, uh, it's.
Westerly.
Southwest, southwest?
Yeah.
In order to get morale with, um, uh, but, you know, we want to try to minimize taking out the existing vegetation. You can see from the GIS plan that there's, uh, a decent amount of existing vegetation, but, you know, it's, we're flexible, it can go to.
Look what it abuts.
Right.
Yes, we could do.
Right.
You're moving it back a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think we'll probably tweak that a little bit to make it a little, a little better access. But we wanted, we didn't want to shove it up against the neighbor without.
No, that's a different name, I'm talking about the back neighbor.
You already mentioned that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's the coffee, guys?
They're on the other side.
Yeah.
Over here.
Yeah.
Over there.
This is the other circle.
This is the, yeah.
Yeah, the neighbor.
I already had to turn it all around.
The neighbor.
I'm looking at it, go on, turning it around, you're going, no, no.
So, I, I had originally asked for a waiver on, um, screening, although I don't know that we need it, I think we can maintain a decent amount of screening, although frankly, I don't know that supplying it.
Nobody has any screening.
Means anything. And, and we asked for waivers from some of the basic, the technical requirements for an MCD, because we're not really doing a major new thing here, it's basically what's existing. So that's, that's where we are, Paul, I don't know if I missed anything on your end?
No, I think you've covered it all, we've shown a compliant handicap space in the front, we've shown, you know, what we depict as nine total parking spaces and we're basically maintaining the footprint that's out there right now, it is a, uh, timber-edged stone, uh, parking area is what it is right now. Currently, the overhead door is on the front, front side of the building with one access, um, access door on the, on the westerly, um, side.
Yeah, uh, the one thing I should mention is that sort of shaded area on the back that would be for exterior storage, that would be for things like large, um, amounts of wire or conduit or, you know, like big, large items, um, not a bunch of junk, but it would all be palletized, yeah, not storing junk out there.
Would you go through the building to get to that area?
Yeah.
I think that area would be fenced and secured also.
Right, so that's what I was going to get to, is we would have.
Outside storage?
What?
Outside storage.
Outside storage, but with some sort of security fencing. It could be chain link, it could be wood, you know, like if you care, you can tell us what it is, if you don't care, we'll just deal with the HDC.
But essentially, it's the building, it's the building, it's the building.
Right, so we'd have palletized materials out there.
Like I said, I was the chairman and I did the decision.
Right, it was, it was certainly a creative decision.
It was, wasn't it?
The only thing I have is the screening for the, you know, for Mark and Sherry's, the industrial kind of thing there, whatever that is.
Yeah, that's a mix, that's, it's a residential, but he's got the irrigation business, he's got the irrigation business and he does have some, yeah.
I've been over there to look at, like, what kind of screening is natural.
It's not as intense as what's to the south, but, um, it's a pretty heavy screen out there now. There is, the parking lot is actually screened with, where the parking spaces are is screened with Privet, up against the, the, the tree line, and it's, it's a pretty dense screen throughout that area.
Yeah.
I don't know what it looks like in the winter, but right now it's screened.
Can you angle back in because of the tightness?
Can't, with the angle, you wouldn't be able to, once you get in, you'd have to back out.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
What, what about drainage?
It's just kind of gravelly there.
It's, it's all gravel, it's, it's.
I know, but is it?
There is no drainage on the site.
Is it, is it required for an MCD?
Uh, not for an, well, not necessarily for the MCD, it's in the public wellhead recharge, but it's essentially grandfathered, I mean, it's a pre-existing use.
Yeah, the building's not changing.
You know, so the, there's been, there's no change right now to the impervious of what's happening on the site, but. I mean, if this was a clean, if, if this was a clean site we came in, we'd have to recharge eighty percent of the, you know, you know, so.
It only recently got into the, uh, rough head.
Right.
Um, how many, how many parking spaces do you need, because it seems like you could eliminate.
You only need five, I think, under the code, yeah.
Why don't you take out that number seven and then?
Yeah.
You've got some space.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't care, but.
If we did, um, forty-five hundred square feet and nine hundred square feet gross floor area per space, you only need five spaces, but I asked Paul to maximize it so that we could, you know, show you that, you know, if, if you thought it needed more, but certainly creating a little, uh, you know, wiggle room and, and shoulder room, elbow room would be good.
John, did you have anything?
No, especially knowing the use, I'm fine with it.
Leslie, did you have anything?
Excuse me, ma'am. Wait, wait, we're not there, we're not there yet.
I promise you I'll have your turn. Thank you. Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, my only concerns are about the driveway entrance, you have that handicap space that's, you're hanging out into the driveway entrance a little bit, and then those spaces, you know, seven and eight, just seems a little tight with people coming in, the handicap space being there, and then that thirteen-foot wide, um, distance between, pardon three, seven.
I'd just get rid of those two. Get rid of those two.
Yeah, I mean, you could, it actually does, it's, it's kind of a deceiving site and I've, I've actually driven it and marked out what we tried to do here, because a lot of the time, like, when it looks on paper, it doesn't look like it does in the field.
They're not required.
So when you come in, Leslie, you come in, there's actually that wide open, there's a concrete apron and then the, the, um, the pavers. So you come in very nice and you can make that sweep into the handicap spot, and you can back out of that handicap spot, work your way back where that car is right now and still be clear of those two spaces.
But you don't need them.
It's not ideal, but it does, it does work. Eliminating spaces seven and eight obviously completely cures it. It's kind of deceiving, the way I've got the space drawn where it's nine, it, it's more so, it would be more kicked this way. When you drive in, you kind of just, you sweep in and you could come, so that nine would kind of kick to the north a little bit, where the car, the, the car would sit there.
Paul, is it eight and eight on that space or?
Eight and eight, it's a van, it would be a van.
Eight and eight is van?
Eight and eight is van, yes.
Eight and four, eight and six is regular.
Eight and eight by twenty feet in length.
Eight and six is regular.
Yeah, eight and eight is a, is a van accessible space.
So it is eight and eight, Leslie?
Yeah, so.
But we're, we're having to retool the parking.
Yeah, I think there's some, there's, like I said, even, even if that, um, as you drive in that first timber, if that seven and eight were kicked, you could actually kick, maybe even kick that timber a little bit and widen that out. The open space is not going to be an issue and you may improve that coming in and out there, so.
Or you can just take them out and they're going to practically use whatever they're going to.
Yeah, or just take them out.
I don't want houses to go to those spaces.
Maybe in practical terms, electric contractors are not, like, shopping, you know, they place an order, if they come in to pick it up, they're, yeah. It's not, it's not a consumer-based business.
Anything else from the board? So this is a public hearing, so, now, if you just do me a favor, come on down this way, please.
Because it's not going to pick her up from.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Yeah, and. Thank you, Steve, I appreciate that.
What's the name? What's the name?
Lois Sager.
Yeah, please pull up the seat.
Location, where's her house?
Um, I'm.
Address, eleven T'sdale?
Yeah.
Is it on the plan?
Yeah.
Can you point to it on here or?
Yeah, take your time.
I don't think it's on there, I think she's to the left.
You're a little by, you're a bit more of an ear.
Yeah, there's a house there.
And I'm concerned if, if you don't have parking, I mean, you're having, you're having that parking here, I mean.
Yeah.
Because the road's getting, um, the road is getting more and more traffic with, um.
It's poorly designed.
Yeah, and, um, and.
Ken, thank you, can you, you have a question, please, thank you.
So, um, so I'm worried about the, you know, the traffic and the fact that I, um, I mean, I came in when this whole thing started, um, and, you know, it's, it's a nice little neighborhood and so I, you know, I don't want to have as, I mean, yes, we do have commercial and everything else, but, um, but I just want to make sure that your parking is in, in your plot.
Yeah.
Just because they're.
On the property.
On the property, yeah, and because it's getting really, um, congested on both sides of the street, so, um.
Well, that we could, that could be a condition that their parking, all parking related to this business is on-site and not in the layout of T'sdale Circle, that's not unusual for us to do that.
That would be fine.
I mean, I just, I just hope it, if we're getting so commercial that, um, you know, and my property's going downhill.
Well.
There's only a couple of you left in there.
I mean.
I know.
It's the problem with RC two.
We're not getting so commercial, we're left, so this is like what was left and so gentrified over the last thirty years, so.
Yeah, okay.
But, uh, can I ask you a question, if, if that restriction were put in place though, with that kind of, I mean, I understand, there's probably more concerns beyond that, but from what you've initially, okay.
I mean, because, you know, there, there are kids in the, you know, um, you know, in, on, on the opposite side and, you know, I just, and there are a lot of little kids out there, so, um, anyway, so.
And they're not open late, you're open, they're only open during the daytime, they're not open on Sundays and.
This isn't an intense, you're not getting semis of wire, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's not like that.
No, it's.
Small delivery trucks.
Nobody, nobody said that.
It's small, it's relatively, you know, low-volume customers, you know, hopefully high-volume sales, but low number of people shopping there. The hours would not be consumer-based, you know, you're talking about like seven to five or, you know, whatever contractors are working. You're not open late, there's no noise, there's no, you know, music, there's no, I mean, if this was retail, which is allowed by right, it would be a much more intense use.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is not like, like free.
So, does that help?
That, that helps us, you know, it's, I just wish it, it was, you know, some more houses versus.
Well, that's not going to happen there. It's a commercial building and it's a commercial building and.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
But just, yeah, that's, that's why I'm asking, just in relation to the project itself, where there's an opportunity to, you know, work with them to do things, I just want to make sure.
Because it just gets so, you know, all this area and that, but anyway, if, if you're putting it in there, that's.
Yeah, I mean, my client's intent is to provide sufficient parking, they don't, they'd be happy with a, uh, condition for no parking in the road, and if the, if the board has any, um, you know, wants, wants to see any tweaks to the parking, I think what we talked about is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I really do appreciate it. Does anyone else in the audience have, yeah, come on down? Ooh, so sorry.
Hi, y'all. I am Bert Rice, I run Granite City Electric Supply over on Amelia.
Yep.
And, uh, I have some issues concerning bringing another supply house onto the island in the location where they're trying to go as well. There was a comment I just heard about, there's no semis, that's not true, because there are semis. You have to have pipe, you get lifts the pipe in, you get pallets of wire in. I've been doing this for twenty-five years, I know for a fact how that company works, how they bring material in, how you have to buy material. That area, you can't get a semi down to unload pipe. I have enough trouble on Amelia getting pipe off of a truck, much less you put it on a circle, they're not going to be able to do that. When you say it's not retail, it is retail.
We didn't say it wasn't retail.
Ken, you, excuse me.
The comment was that it's, that they don't do a lot of retail. I sell to every single contractor on Nantucket, I've only been here eight months, okay, so I just moved here from Florida, I've ran a supply house down in Florida for the last twenty years. I know what it takes to run that, I know how these contractors work, I also know that we are open to the general public as far as retail goes. So when you say it's not open to retail, City Electric Supply is all about retail. And the reason I know that is I spent the last fifteen years with that company. So when I say that they're all about retail, they are all about retail, on top of the general contractors, the, the electricians that come in there. So you're going to have a lot more traffic coming in and out of that building than what's being proposed. You're going to have pipe, you can't store the pipe, lifts the pipe inside, there's no way to do that. I have that issue now in our building. My issue is, you know, we talk about the size of a company coming to an island, they have twelve hundred locations worldwide, they're a massive company. They're not coming here just to be a small four thousand square foot building, they're coming here to take the business away from a Baines and Jones, which by the way, is directly on the other side of that wall.
We can't even go there.
Just, will you let him finish first, please?
And take my business, I'm, I'm cool with that, because it's healthy competition at the end of the day, if that's what it comes down to. Like I said, I've been here eight months and all I'm hearing about is, okay, we don't want certain businesses, yet we're going to allow something like this into a building that's not conducive for it, because it's not going to be able to house what they're trying to do. I get a truckload of pipe in once a month from Cape Cod Express, they bring that out, they have to offload on Tacoma Way, because there's no way to do it, there's no way you're going to get a semi to turn that corner.
Or put it in the condition.
Right, and then they're going to have to offload on the main roads.
Where are they going to bring a fifty-nine foot trailer?
I don't know, will the, will the contractors bring them now?
Ken, are you, because I will allow the board to interact back, but are you good?
Okay, go ahead.
Because I feel like we keep interrupting you, I want to make sure, I understand there are concerns, but.
I also know that they have a footprint that they use for their buildings in far as for the fronts of them, so if they're going to modify that for what they're going to do, um, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't coincide with what they've normally done.
Do you want to respond first before I open?
Yeah, just, just a little bit, I mean, I think obviously this location is outside of what they would normally do, as, most people, most, most national businesses that come to Nantucket have to adjust, uh, this is, if they were building from a fresh lot, they'd get a much bigger lot, they'd do a much bigger building, you know, but this is, they, they under, the, the, the people who own this business who came here and did the site visit and selected this site, understand what the road looks like, understand how their business works, understand what the building is, and they're going to, you know, make it work in there, they're not, um, you know, buying this on the internet, they came here and did site, you know, site inspections to see what worked. I, I do want to clarify, I'm not suggesting in any way that there's no retail, but it is not a primarily retail-oriented business, it is a, uh, trades business that is open to the public and, uh, is, but it is not, you know, I mean, it is not, the, the irony of course is, and sort of the strange thing is that retail is allowed by right, so, so we wouldn't even need, we wouldn't even.
I understand it's allowed by right, and I'm not arguing that point, the point is, is saying that it's not going to have much retail there is not true, because I know how the city electric model works and it's all about getting the retail customer into your location.
If, if they.
Right, and he'll address your comments through the chair, not to each other, so thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay, no, no, thank you, go ahead, Steve.
So, you know, I, this business model exists in two other locations within a stone's throw of here and, you know, they make it work, and my client has investigated the site and is going to make it work at the level and volume that is acceptable and applicable at this site.
Thank you, did you have something to?
No, I'm just, I get what he's saying, I'm, I'm thinking of a, of a new grocery store, I'm telling them to hear Annie's Whole Foods, it's the same discussion.
Okay.
Okay, it's exactly the same, I'm going to tell you something, I think this is a stupid idea for them to come here, but we can't as a board say, well, we don't need another electric supplier.
Or competition.
You see what I'm saying?
I fully understand that.
You're, you're not wrong, you've only been here for an hour, but you're actually pretty honest of a few things, it takes people a lifetime to figure out what you've said. There's, the, the business, there isn't really a market for another place, just so you know.
I agree, I already know that.
But, but, we can't say you can't come here.
Right.
Okay? They, this is a risk that they're taking, they're probably going to get out of here after a while, because it's not going to work. I told FW Webbed not to come here, I said, you're out of your mind, put a shovel in the ground, now you're spending some money. Okay, they're just better off selling a straight job a week for free, one truck, see you later, so it's complicated. Housing, employees are coming on the boat, somebody quits, they can't, no place to live, I mean, they're going to have to deal with all the economics of Nantucket, okay? But we can't just say, well, we think this is a bad idea, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I fully understand that.
This is a commercial area, you know, it's, how long is conduit? Is it twenty feet?
You have ten footer and twenty footers, and most of the guys on the island since I've been here want twenty footers, uh, and that's an issue. I have an issue getting that off of Tacoma Way to, into our parking lot, so that right there, you have no way to get twenty footers into that, none, zero.
Physics, the, the rules of physics are going to be a plus.
Can I ask, Leslie?
I mean, if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, it's not like, we're not going to float it. It's not, it's not, it's not my job to figure that out or your job to figure that out, if they have to not sell something that they can't fit on their site, then they can't, you know, you don't need to condition, stuff that doesn't fit can't go in the shop, you know?
Go ahead, Joe.
Can we restrict the semis?
Nope.
So, they can park in Teasdale Circle, unload, like they do in Tacoma.
You're talking about, you're talking about, you're talking about a semi once or twice a month, and, but, I mean, that's all over the island, the same situation.
They break them down and put them on small trucks, they'll, they'll, they'll put it on a small truck, the, the lifts of conduit, just like PVC, it's the same thing, they're gonna put it on a small truck.
It's the same thing every business on Nantucket.
Formers barely fits it in, it fits, and they leave the trailer there, they disconnect the tractor and leave it there for two days.
Yeah, it's a fifty-three foot trailer, that idea once a month.
I know how long it is, I know how long it is.
All right, got, guys.
But what I'm saying is, it fits, where you get it, it works, but here, they're not gonna be able to disconnect a scapegoat trail on the street, leave it there, I can tell you that, now you'll have a problem, so they're gonna have to make it work, it's gonna be, you know, by hand, different things, small trucks, draking it down, I mean, that's what's gonna end up happening.
It's, it's a supply chain issue for the, for the, for the owner, you know?
Leslie, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Given the type of application at this point, can this be reopened at any stage if it proves to be problematic as, as things go on?
It's a special permit, special permits can always be reopened if there's a problem.
It is? Is it existing?
Yes.
Ken, thank you.
Concerns came up with plumber's supply, which is at the other end of Teasdale, and offhand, I can't remember if the board included conditions about.
Was it ninety-three?
Offloading, well, it was maybe two thousand nine.
Oh, it's something change.
Annie, Annie's building.
The, uh, yeah, so the one at the corner of, or the other corner of Teasdale in the area.
Annie Teasdale's building.
Oh.
So, I mean, maybe we wanna look at that decision and bring it tonight and anticipate this semi.
Well, I mean, when you look at supply to England.
Yeah.
Um, and that's a good one, it's fresh, right, they moved from Emporium thing there, right? They have a spot where they can bring a semi, pull it in, there's a gate, they can disconnect the tractor, leave the trailer and pull it out, and it actually just falls into place like it came out of a helicopter, it just sits there.
Yeah.
It's not bothering anybody.
These are logistics that we have to do.
This place doesn't have that, but they're gonna have to figure out some other way to do things, I mean, it's, 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 I mean, again, we can't, what business doesn't get deliveries on the Nantucket, somebody's getting something.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right, I mean, I get Cape Cod every day.
I mean, it's, the Cape Cod breaks down and puts things on, so they have a zillion twenty-foot box trucks and small straight job delivery trucks that are getting around corners, cab over, so they, they're gonna find a way to get those pallets in.
Right. But, what we're, what we're talking about here is, is supply chain and the cost for my clients and the economic advantage and what the products that can carry and can't car, carry, and the competitive advantages of those, I, I think we're sort of outside the, the application.
Yeah, way outside.
If there's no real additional planning issues to discuss, or, you know, or if the board doesn't need more information, I think, I, I don't know that there is.
Well, I, I think, okay, so, here's what I'm gonna remind you, I know this table changes the dynamics, but comments flow through the chair, okay, and we're getting into these kind of.
Back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, and so, I wanna make sure that I maintain that back again, thank you, well, because Mr. Charles got something for us, John, go ahead.
Well, I was actually agreeing with Stephen, I don't wanna limit any business, um, control competition, but, uh, as far as the law reading the, uh, restrictions of the planning board, and the, if we can't, if you, you know, if you can't get the, uh, the twenty-foot pipe in there, then you might have a good monopoly on twenty feet, twenty feet pipe sales. So, I think, um, you know, you're not gonna get a quarter and a dime slot, so if it can't work, it can't work, and if it can, they'll figure it out, so I don't think it's, you know, for us to say that they can't go in there based on competition, so.
And, you also, John?
I am.
All right, so, here's the other thing too, is that, as is true with any other special permit, if it's not working, especially for the neighborhood as well too, this board can reopen a public hearing at this point to be able to determine what's gone awry and, and try to address that situation, and that's one of the things, that's why I was asking Leslie specifically. So, there is a safeguard, and I'm saying to you too, there is a safeguard that's put in place where you, as a member of the public, can come back before the planning board, say, we've got some really major concerns here, here they are, we, you as a board really should reopen that hearing, and, and we can make a determination to do that, and then break it down further. This is what keeps most applicants on the up and up as well too, because, believe me, they don't want a second trip before the planning board, they have to re-engineer what's already in place. So, it's, it's a nice safeguard on a number of different levels that sit there, um, and so I, I reassure you of that, 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 that is the cross check in the system, and that's one of the things I like about what we can do.
Mr. Chairman, just one last thing, um, I wanna make sure that the board is clear that, um, one of the things that we're asking for is a release from the prior zoning conditions of no advertising or no sign, I think that, uh, in this case, that we could move beyond that.
If, as one member of the board, that's, I'm fine with that, but that's something you're gonna have to work out with the H C C sign community.
Yeah, no, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear that we were seeking a release from that, from those prior conditions.
Joe.
So, someone's buying this to put the same similar business that this gentleman runs.
Correct.
So, have they, do they have a plan for how they're gonna handle these semis and pallets and that you can tell us about even? I mean, what's gonna happen, where are they gonna park, how are they gonna load, that seems to me fair game.
That you.
Well, I mean, he's, he's buying this business, it's the same business that he has, you're gonna sell the same stuff.
Right. Right.
How are you gonna get that stuff into this building?
We're, we're skating on areas that we can't legally go.
Am I, am I, am I missing something, or why do I need a semi to deliver a twenty-foot section of pipe?
No.
You don't.
So, what's the, I don't know what we're talking about, it's a twenty-foot section, a semi is fifty-five feet trailer, it's a bit of overkill, isn't it, for a twenty-foot section of pipe?
I understand. I was just responding to what this gentleman brought up.
So, I mean, maybe I'm not, I'm not driving a truck, but I know twenty and fifty-five don't add up, I mean, that's the same.
I, I think, I think it works somewhat the opposite, and I, you know, I don't wanna, not committing to this, but when I talked to my client about what they would be storing outside, they talked about, you know, ten-foot sections of pipe, I don't know if they're playing, if they'd like to do twenty, if they can't, if they can't do it, they can't do it, but I, I think it, it's sort of the opposite question, which is that, you know, you don't typically get from people their delivery plan, it's that if they.
No, we don't.
They get a, they get a permit, and then they have to make it work, and these guys are pros, so they make it work at the level that is allowed on this site.
But aren't we looking at the neighborhood, I mean, it has to work not just for the, for the applicant.
Yeah.
It has to work for the lady that spoke before, and, and, you know, the people across the street, you know, you don't want the road blocked off and the fire truck can't get there, and.
So.
I, I.
So on, you know what I mean?
Mr. Chairman, can you, can you hold that off for one second, because I wanna bounce this through staff.
So, to clarify, the, the loading requirement in the bylaw was removed, but it says now that during the issuance of a special permit, the special permitting authority can review loading and determine whether or not it's necessary, so I think it's totally appropriate for you all to be having this conversation about how the loading will or won't work.
Thank you.
It won't block in the road.
We, we could.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
The, the two spaces that we've eliminated here leave plenty of room for a loading zone that would be used on a very infrequent basis, uh.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you're gonna have a thirty-foot, even if you have a thirty-foot straight, an SU thirty truck is gonna come down Teasdale, it's probably gonna back its way into this site, it's gonna back its way in, it's gonna unload, and it's gonna drive straight out.
Yeah.
Right, that's what they all do.
Which is what's happening all over this place, I mean, there's a, um, you know, Chris Yates has, uh, a wood company in here, he's delivering lengths of wood.
Carter Mitchell.
You know, twelve feet long or whatever, he's getting pallets and pallets of them, this, this, this commercial use is similar to this already here on the street.
I was trying to make that argument.
They're Z B A.
I was just saying, I was trying to explain it the way you do.
I mean, I think the, the Amelia Drive is more a function of what happens on Amelia Drive, I mean, look at, you got cars parking on one side of Amelia Drive, you got it.
No, I understand that.
You know, I mean, I'm assuming that's why they're parking on Tacoma.
So, so what you're saying is, you're gonna unload your bigger trucks on the site, not in the street.
So, they, they would break down the materials and deliver them in a way that works appropriately for the site, which is, I think, what every business in, in the area and on Nantucket does.
So, but if it was a big truck, you would back it into thirty-four or more, you'll back it into the site, not unload on Teasdale or.
Well, the condition is, nothing parks on Teasdale.
Ken, Mr. Mark, if you have a floor, let, let him proceed, please.
Are you, are you asking me if that's an acceptable condition?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If that's a determination for the board to make.
On which, backing in or driving in?
Driving in, in other words, not offloading the, the materials anywhere but on, on the site.
Right, that was my condition earlier.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Hold on, I, I promise I'll get you there, just bear with me for a minute, please.
Oh, come on.
I guess I would say that you should treat this the way you treat any other similar application, and if that would be something that you would consider to be a standard condition, then it should be applied, and if it's an atypical condition, I wouldn't apply it here, um, it sounds like it's a little, a little, a little more than you typically do, although not outrageous, but a little heavier than you normally do. Usually, uh, I'm, I don't recall that condition.
Hit, 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 Ken, I think I can, hold on, can you hold on for one sec? One, he's got the floor.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, you're done, let me turn to this gentleman, then I'll turn to you now.
So, my, my, my concern and question is two things, one, you have the issue of the discircle, because it is on the bend of the circle, I don't care how you look at it, or how you try to say it's gonna work, when you get pipe, and I'm just using pipe, because that's the way it has to come, it has to come on a flatbed, and then when they bring them, it's on a straight flatbed, comes straight from the dock, it does not go to Cape Cod and get offloaded, it comes straight, so they're not gonna be able to get down there, so, then that's gonna block your road, so that's gonna cause issues down that road. The other issue is, I hear you guys taking parking stalls away for contractors, when you get three, four, five, six deep into a counter to pick up orders, you're taking away parking stalls from them, now they have nowhere to park, so now where are they gonna park, they're gonna park on the road, because now the pipe yard's gonna be full, or their yard, as you may call it, is gonna be full, so now they're gonna be on the road, whether you say that they can't park on the road or not, now that's gonna be an issue.
I, I think, if the contractors are parking in the road, then we would be back before the board with, with onerous, uh, response from the board to ensure that that didn't happen again, I, I am wide open on that.
That'd be a violation of their permit.
Yeah, just so, go ahead now.
No, I just, you know what, I'm not gonna say anything else, I wanna move this on, I'm getting kinda aggravated now, because I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have entertained all that stuff, I know too much, I shouldn't have said anything, and I opened up all these other questions, what I was trying to say to you was, a twenty-foot pallet gets put, can get put on a straight job, just because it comes to your place off the boat, doesn't mean that it goes to every place off the boat, okay, end of story.
Don't keep going with this.
But that's not end of story.
It is, it's a fact.
Gentlemen.
Don't keep going with this.
It is true.
Gentlemen, I've reminded you through, through the board, through the chair.
Come tell me.
All right. Do you have any comments? Now, thank, I appreciate it, I'm, I'm sorry for some of the interruption.
No, I, we're, we're, we hear the concerns of the board and the neighbors, and I think that they can be addressed with standard conditions, and, uh, we're happy to close the public hearing unless there's any, uh, additional information that the board feels is appropriate.
Okay.
Um, and just to back up to one of the initial points, if the board felt that maintaining screening on any side was appropriate, we'd be happy to have that condition, you know, I think that it, it doesn't necessarily make sense in some areas, but wherever you think it's appropriate, it's fine.
Leslie, did you have something, go ahead.
Well, I just wanna remind the board that this, as Mr. Collins said, it's an expansion of a pre-existing non-conformal use, and that is subject to a higher threshold of review than just regular, um, special permit for commercial use.
Mm-hmm.
And so, even if the board doesn't routinely require off-street loading or a requirement that says there shall be no on-street offloading, because of the nature of this permit and the fact that it is an extension of a pre-existing non-conformal use, I think that would be reasonable for you to include if that's what you wanna do.
Okay.
What, no offloading in the street, yeah, that's what I'm saying, get rid of those first two spaces, it gives you a lot of room.
And, board members, do you want any type of screening, which was brought up?
Just look at the screening of, uh, existing brush that's in between, if it's evergreen type or not, that's all, you know what I'm saying, I'm gonna ask it for a landscape plan.
Everybody else.
That's it. Is there anything else you wanna deal with in terms of conditions in term, in terms of what's going down the roadway as well too, or are we done, are we over? I'm just, I'm asking all of you.
No. Can't do that.
You can do, you.
You can tell them they can't have a certain type of truck.
Hold on, Leslie, I'm deferring to staff, and I think Leslie has pretty much clearly said.
Teasdale public or private road?
Please.
Private.
It's a private road.
Yeah.
Uh, I think maybe going into the type of vehicle that comes to the site might be a bit much and difficult to enforce.
Right.
But definitely a condition about, you know, maintaining a loading area on the site, putting in a condition about no offloading in the street is acceptable.
Yeah, they'll have to figure it out from there.
All right, but is that conditions that this board wants for the place, is what I'm asking you for, okay, all right.
Yes.
We've brought that up a hundred times.
Well, it's kinda been all over the place.
No, not on, not offloading in the street or parking in the street, we said that an hour ago.
Never mind, you're just, you're dying for an argument.
I think, I think parking was pretty clear, I think loading is. I'm amused.
If I could just, I mean, the first, not the aerial overlay, but the, this one here, just to give you a sense of scale, so you've got a, there is, actually, as part of the original ninety, um, special permit, you can see there is a fourteen by thirty-five loading area that we just left on the plan just for, and that's, that's right in this area here, just to give you a sense of scale, that's a straight, that's an SU thirty truck, fourteen by thirty-five, oversized, and twenty feet, that's twenty feet, but I mentioned, there's a twenty-foot dimension, just so you can get a sense of what a twenty-foot pipe looks like, on that site, that's your twenty-foot pipe, so.
It was required back then.
All right.
Don't try to open it.
Yes, we just can't tell them what kind of truck they drive.
Okay, okay.
Um, let me just, is there anyone else in the audience who wants to comment on this? All right, not saying anything else.
Motion.
And, hold on, hold on, are you clear on everything? Yes, ma'am.
We wanna include hours of operation, no Sundays, no.
They're gonna happen by themselves with the business.
We don't have that on ninety percent of the people in, within a hundred feet of this, we don't have those conditions.
So.
What do we have on plumber's supply, is it at the other end?
Right.
Because that would be consistent with plumber's supply, it's over there.
Those kind of businesses don't have that.
I, I, I think I'd be shocked if they were up until six.
They're not, they're closed at five.
We, we could be competitively advantaged by being open until six, but the contractors are home at four-thirty.
Leslie, do you need a sec? All right, that's fine, I think you, I think.
While I'm looking that up, um.
Yes.
While we're talking about evergreen screening, is that between this property and Teasdale?
In, my, yeah, yeah, just, is a.
And then for the screening of the storage, you're trying to tell, I talked about some fencing.
In the back.
Have anything specific, like a solid board fence or?
No, it's right, it's against us, it's against a chain link fence, so it makes no sense to have solid board next to a chain link fence back there.
Yeah. Don't do anything in the back.
No chain, it's just chain link back there now.
We'll just do whatever the H C C prefers.
Well, you're right up against a chain link, so maybe you just butt into the chain link that's already back there.
Your gentleman good with that? Yes, yeah.
Do we close the public hearing?
Ken, Leslie right now is gathering information, just because, can we give her the appropriate amount of time here, please?
I have the decision, but it won't open, but I just read it a second ago, and I didn't notice hours of operation, but it's, it's very safe to say they don't have any.
Okay, I'll go with the conditions already there that Leslie's talked about.
Hold on. We good? All right.
I'll make second his motion to close the public hearing.
All right, so, and you're good, Leslie, with everything?
Before you do that, I just wanna make sure, Colin. Are we either bound by the parking plan, or do you wanna see an adjustment to the parking plan before we close it, because I don't wanna get into a permitting question later.
I think the first two spaces gotta come out. How they practically use it is how they practically use it, but the first two spaces opens up the ability to load in and load out. But the first two spaces opens up the ability to load in and load out.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just don't wanna go for a permit later, and Marcus says, oh, no, you have to do, you know, these nine.
No, you get five spaces, all required.
Right, so we're looking at seven.
Seven. Are you gentleman, good with that?
That's fine, yeah, it's a good idea.
All right.
Good job.
Leslie.
Just reflect based on that, and you're gonna push that retaining wall or retaining curb or whatever that is?
If the board wants, yeah, we could go west, yeah. West.
West to widen up a little bit, if you're gonna use that for a little bit.
Sure.
We good here, Mr. Cohen?
I think so.
All right. Board members, anything else? Leslie, good. So, again, I'll take the motion to close the public hearing. And I do hear a second discussion.
Whatever.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve either conditions as outlined already.
Do we hear a second discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Next thing before us is eight zero two six, Head of the Plains, Sheep Pond Road, subdivision fifteen and seventeen, Head of Plains Road. Good evening.
Patricia Hall, Stut Attorney, heard the applicant, Ken and Dunes LLC, fifteen Head of Plains. In two thousand and eleven, we received a modification of a previously endorsed subdivision plan, and there were requirements that we set up the homeowners' subdivision. It's just two lots that we're talking about, as well that we fund it, like a thousand dollars. So, we're looking for a waiver of the requirement to create a homeowners' association and funding thereof.
Board members, any discussion on this? Leslie?
We recommend that for both, in, for the two lots, two owners, they should go to work together. And the board's done that on other really small-scale subdivisions.
Got it. This is a, we good? We're good so far, right? Okay, yeah, this is a public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this, hearing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do we hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, that brings us to Richmond subdivision.
What are we doing?
Well, let's just take it one step at a time, see what occurs. But, like I said, Mr. Arminetti? How are you guys? So, I, unless you wanna narrow focus to things here, because I'm a little unclear. There's a lot of no further, you know, no further reports at this point. So, I'm a little fuzzy about where we're tracking to right now, because I know there's a number of issues that are kinda floating out there that need some higher level resolution. And so, I wanna be a little generous here, but on the other side of the coin, I feel like there's a lot of things we're just not ready to track onto yet.
Sure, we could clarify a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Can everybody hear out there? Do you need to move in closer?
Can I, can I start, though, David, just to remind you that part of what we're waiting on is for you to schedule that traffic. So, we can make that a priority for tonight. I think we really need to get that. A lot of things are pending on that.
Sure, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I think we have a recusal, please be announced.
Oh.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself and ask the excuse for any of the Richmond groups.
All right, that's, thank you for doing that, yes. Are you going going or are you coming back?
How many of them are you here right now?
This, I'm probably gonna open the whole slate, and then there's really only a sketch plan and one narrative that else is all else for us.
I probably bumped out.
All right, so, Steve, what I should...
You get to go.
Can you sit for one sec? And it's something I should have done earlier amidst all the confusion. Welcome on board, Steve Welsh, who's our new alternate to the planning board at this point. I'm sorry I missed that opportunity earlier, forgot to catch it at the end of the night, so I wanna do it before you leave, so thanks. Welcome on board.
Thank you, no apology necessary.
They were good.
Okay, so, thank you. Hi, guys. Okay, you're just standing. Oh, okay.
All righty then.
The one person in the room that needs rest at this point. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, staff, and neighbors. Dave Arminetti, Richmond Gray Point Development. With us tonight, our team, Patty Rogavine. We just spoke, and Arthur Reed, our local counsel, is also in attendance. So, nice to be back in this more intimate setting for the second time in a row, for us. I think, if you will, Mr. Chairman and board members, we have a brief update on the first item, the Skyline Drive, Clay Street subdivision. And then, if the board's so inclined, essentially, we could open all the other public hearings simultaneously. We'll provide a general overview of the changes that we have made and proposed to the master plan, site plan and concept that was submitted to the board and the staff last Friday. And I think that would probably trigger the conversation from there, and I think generate the direction that we're looking to receive tonight.
Dave, hang on a second. These microphones are not to make it so you guys can hear. These microphones are strictly for the TV audience. If anybody can't hear, roll on up. But we'll speak as loud as we can, but these are not for you, these are for the TV.
I think they got it.
So, I should use my Steve Cohen voice to project properly?
You should use my voice.
I'm still here, David.
I know.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, I guess, I don't know if you wanna open them separately. The first one is a little separate from the rest. However you wanna handle it, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I was kinda trying to defer to you a little bit, because when I looked at the staff report, there's a lot of things that were just really, in my mind, were no real action with things. So, all right, so let's open up seven nine one eight, which is, of course, Richmond Gray Point LLC, with Skyline Drive and Dave Kim.
Great, thank you. On this item, the last time we were before the board at your September regular meeting, we were hoping to have a revised engineering plan for this, ready for the board's review and the public's review. Tonight, we are still proceeding with some final engineering on that, mostly as relates to making sure that the drainage works to meet the requirements of the aquifer, which, as you know, this is on the edge of the aquifer, but it still is within the aquifer, so it has to meet the ninety-five percent recharge and other applicable requirements. And we didn't wanna bring anything before the board and the public that we didn't know with a hundred percent certainty would meet that requirement. So, we're very close. I guess we're forced with a choice to either, if we can assure ourselves that the plan will meet that requirement, which we believe it will within the next couple days, we'd like to submit in time for the October deadline, so you can take it up at your November meeting. Otherwise, if we don't quite make that deadline, we would probably come back and show it on an informal basis and then submit in time for the December meeting. But our hope is to get it done in time for a Monday submittal, which is the deadline with Catherine and the staff to meet, to be able to come back after proper notice at your regular November meeting. But we do believe we have a solution that provides the board with the solution they were, the direction you were providing to us, which is to allow for the future connection of Clay Street into the twenty Dave Kim property in a manner that would meet the subdivision requirements if and when the board of selectmen at some point in the future were to choose to make that connection and the surrounding road network public. And we believe it will also resolve the title claim that's being asserted by one of the abutters. So, that's our goal, is to submit that before the Monday deadline and have it in front of you for your November meeting.
With a way to cut it off in the meantime.
Absolutely. As the board's discussed and given us, whatever road is being proposed at this point would be distinctly cut off well in advance of it reaching the twenty Dave Kim property boundary. And we suspect, given the tenor of the discussion so far, that there would be a specific condition, if a condition, if an approval was to be granted, that would specify and clarify that. And I'm confident the staff will be able to come up with something that makes that clear.
Okay. Holly, do you?
I'm just curious, is this gonna be a new application or...?
Technically, it will have to be a new application, because we're moving a couple of the pieces of the jigsaw puzzle around. So, technically, we will have to withdraw the current application, submit a new application that will require new noticing, which I think we described at the last meeting. So, a little bit of extra work for us and the staff to make sure we meet all the requirements, but it's essentially a redesign, but technically, it will have to be a new submittal.
Okay.
I'm gonna try our best. We're cracking the whip on haze engineering as we speak.
Got it. Hang on just for one sec.
She locked herself out.
Yeah.
They lock us in.
Do you wanna just rephrase what I'm saying? We good? So, board members, I think you've heard that we're gonna get a new application before, so I'm not sure if there's anything further you wanna dwell with on this issue.
I think you can explain it to the public, though, because there's probably...
All right, so, I... So, I'm going to return this back over to maybe try a different way, because some of my board members are feeling like what you said wasn't necessarily communicated well to the public. So, let me give you an opportunity to rephrase here.
If I could...
So, everybody knows what this means, so that we don't have any questions. That's all.
Give it a shout out, Penny.
In layman's terms.
She's much better at that than me.
Interpreting, Dave. I think two things. One, we are still looking for what essentially, in our mind, is a driveway to make accessible the lot in the back.
And we're still talking about Clay Street, which is what most of you are here for.
Because of your interest in a future possibility, we've had to re-navigate some of the engineering, which technically means we're gonna have to resubmit the plan. But the plan still will call for a driveway to access that back lot, so that the resubmittal is really a technicality. It's not a change of direction at any level. And our intent is still, and our interest is still in just opening the back lot. And your interest, as it's been expressed to us, is in a future possibility, but that's not what we're proposing.
Does everybody understand that we're gonna carry Clay Street over to the next meeting?
With, and it will have a brand-new application to address some of the concerns that have been raised through the board. And again, like I said, as a board, we've got, there's a lot of different triggers in this, which will also include the board of selectmen in that process as well, too. So, it's not just what our desire is gonna be, but again, to be able to accomplish the task at hand in the long-range plan, we're gonna, we need them to address certain issues which they feel like they can address before, so that if we're gonna tie this thing together, and there is, there has been a lot of expressed desire to do that, that this new application should allow them to do that.
Can I add?
And go ahead.
And the intent would be to have that plan publicly available as of Monday, so that there would be plenty of notice or the required notification for all the abutters and the like. And you'll have a month to look at it, ask us questions, talk to the board members. So, that plan, as it's not, we almost had it ready for tonight, but we didn't. We were gonna give you a sneak peek, so to speak, in terms of what we were doing, but that timing didn't work out. But we will have it complete for the deadline. And in that way, the neighbors can take the whole month to chew on it, basically.
Great. Leslie, did I miss anything in that, or is there anything you need to add to it?
No, or is it, do you want to withdraw the application right now?
We don't have, we have the form filled out. We haven't, we don't have it physically with us. I guess, whatever direction the staff and the board wants.
We can vote to do that.
I think if you're...
We're certainly going to withdraw and resubmit a brand-new application, so tonight's the time to do that.
Right, because otherwise, you're gonna have this open before you at the next meeting, you know, albeit for just a few short moments. But I think in terms, as one member, I think in terms of clarity, and I'm hearing that from staff, that may be the best direction to proceed if you're ready.
Yeah, we're fine with that, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I'd add, consistent with Patty's remarks, but more specifically, as has been our practice, given that there are several abutters that have been involved in this fairly significantly, we will endeavor to send this to them by email electronically or hard copy, so they don't have to come down to the office and request that, so.
Okay, and is it fair game to say, before you leave this meeting tonight, if there's any other people who have concerns about that, you can just meet with them briefly outside afterwards to make sure that they've got you right before you, that's all. All right.
The next meeting is November fourteenth.
Correct, yeah. All right, so, with that in mind, board members, do you have anything? Leslie, staff?
Is that all of them or just that one?
We're just focusing down on this one at the moment, because this is, again, this is gonna get withdrawn. There's gonna be a new one coming before us that addresses a lot of the problems that were associated with it, and it's radical.
I got that.
It's a radical enough change to have to warrant a new application. All right, so, ladies and gentlemen, this is still a public hearing. We started opening this process. I'm gonna ask you if there's any new information that you have before us tonight. But realize, like I said, this is, this application is gonna get closed out, and there'll be a new one before us, well before the next meeting. And we'll have discussion on that at our next meeting in November. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? All right, so, board members not seeing anyone wishing to comment at this point.
Do I need to make a motion to withdraw?
I think the motion would, let's, I think the best thing to do would be, Leslie, probably just close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close.
And then accept the withdrawal without prejudice, yeah?
We don't even have to close it.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's just a formality that we need to do just to keep us safe.
It really doesn't matter that since no one's commenting, they can say, go ahead and close it, and then take the look.
Yeah, so, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing, please.
You made it.
Yeah, and seconded.
Seconded.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
To allow the withdrawal without prejudice.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor with that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Thank you.
Leslie, I'd like to, if you can, I'd give them wave in the filing fees for the next refile for the same application. Do we have to take a...
Yeah, I, go ahead.
The only thing on that, we do have to re-advertise, and there are costs associated with it. The advertisement and the legal ad and the certified mail-ins and that kind of thing.
Yes, sir.
If I could, to that point, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think the filing fees are probably only about a thousand or twelve hundred dollars. We appreciate the gesture and the intent. If the board might be inclined to maybe waive a portion of the engineering escrow, at least upfront, given that it's not a full new review, maybe that would be appropriate. But we're glad to pay the filing fees, mainly for the reasons Leslie articulated, but we appreciate the gesture.
Thank you. All right. So, that's gonna move us along to the multitude of other things that are before us right now at this point. So, with a little bit of guidance from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, to be safe, and so we don't waste the time of the board and the staff and the public, if you'd be so inclined to open all the remaining public hearings, our remarks can essentially encompass all of them in some way, shape, or form, although some aspects of the project more specifically than others. But I think if we open them all now, it'll save everybody a bunch of grief and confusion.
All right, so, let me open seven nine eight eight, which is Richmond Gray Point with Nancy Ann Lane, Gregland Ave, Dafkem Lane, and Old South Road. Forty dash sixteen, which is Meadows Two Rental Apartment Development, Project Twenty and Twenty R, Dafkem. Fifty-three dash sixteen, Sam Piper One, South, Single Family Home Development Project off Daffodil, May Flowers Circle, Evergreen, and Old South Road. Sam Piper Two, North, same process. Eight zero two four, Sam Piper One, South, same process. Eight zero two five, Sam Piper Two, North, same process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what we'd like to do is give the board and the public a brief overview of the changes that we proposed to the master plan that's depicted on the screen by Holly, kind of a high level, and then we'd be glad to answer any specific questions or get into square footages and dimensions. But the basic overview is consistent with the cover letter that we submitted through the staff to your board Friday afternoon, and that we have had a chance to distribute to a fair amount of the abutters who have been most specifically involved. So, I think a lot of them have a head start on this and might be able to contribute some opinions tonight in an informed way. They won't be seeing this for the first time. So, the color, master plan, site plan encompasses all of these applications, and I'll apologize to Mr. Mark Lindger. I don't wanna give him a laser haircut here.
That's okay.
The vast majority of the changes... The vast majority of the changes comprise two specific areas on the plan. I'll go through maybe the simplest one first. Everyone, I think, is familiar with the site plan and orienting ourselves here, but these changes are a combination of input and suggestions that we've solicited and been provided by both the staff and the board, and then also the abutters, most specifically the Cedar Crest Three Homeowners Association abutters, and the Nashaw Homeowners Association abutters, who are obviously two of the most direct and largest neighborhoods surrounding us. One of the changes was, if the board will recall, we formally had proposed this community meeting house focal point out at the northern edge of the property where the primary entrance and exit of the project will be, close to Old South Road. At the suggestion of both the board and primarily the Nashaw homeowners, due to some concerns about noise and interaction, we have moved that about three-hundred-and-fifty feet into the site to the south, along the same plane of the Boulevard, to try and continue to have some visibility and continue to allow it to be a focal point. We've moved it into the site and then flip-flopped a couple of single-family lots with that. So, this use could generate some noise and activity, given that we expect that there will be some public and community events there over time. Once it's established, is deeper into the site and will have less likely generate any noise or related impacts to Old South Road, and particularly to Nashaw. So, that's one of the changes that's depicted here. The size and the configuration of this community meeting house focal point stays the same. It's just relocated a little. And then, secondly, and primarily, in response to the board and the staff concerns and the abutter concerns, we looked in quite a bit of detail and have come up with a transition of density and a buffering along the entire eastern edge of the project site for the Sam Piper One and Sam Piper Two, single-family residential subdivision components, and have provided a series of larger lots here that are labeled as D lots, as opposed to A, B, and C, which were the smaller lots that we originally showed. So, ostensibly, we now have a series of larger lots in kind of a ribbon or a row along the entire frontage of Evergreen Way, and along the entire frontage in the Mayflower Circle, Daph, uh, Mayflower Circle, Daffodil Lane vicinity of the project.
How big are the D lots?
So, the D lots are all right around ten thousand square feet, plus or minus. Right now, all of them are a little over ten thousand. Once we actually engineer this down to the microscopic level, they may change by a couple hundred square feet here or there, but the intent is for them to be within a few hundred square feet under or over of ten thousand. And they're all fairly regularly shaped. The intent here, consistent with some direction we've gotten from the board and the abutters, would be to have these larger lots along the southern half, which is actually fronting in the Cedar Crest One Homeowners Association and subdivision. Those larger lots would now front and take their access to the east, off Evergreen Way, off the existing road. And by doing that, we've eliminated one of these interior subdivision roads here, because these lots no longer need to have frontage on their flip side. They can take frontage along Evergreen, and I think two or three of the board members in particular, I think, had suggested that we go in that direction, in addition to some of the abutters. Similarly, the row of ten thousand square foot lots here have been inserted. These will front on an interior subdivision road, as shown here, and will turn their back, if you will, onto the Cedar Crest Three neighborhood, which I believe is the preference of the neighborhood, is to have larger lots, but to have them face away. So, in the big picture of things, the original submission we had had a hundred and two total buildable lots, ninety-nine of which would have been Richmond, three of which, shown here, would have been conveyed to Housing Nantucket. We're now down to a total of ninety-four buildable lots, ninety-one of which would be owned and controlled by Richmond, the three of which, still in the same location, would be conveyed and owned by Housing Nantucket. And the only other change we made graphically on this master plan, because people have continued to ask about it for clarity, is we've highlighted the three R-twenty-half-acre lots that we purposely had kept out of the rezoning back in November and have kept out of the subdivision, and that we have simply sold to third-party buyers in the neighborhood. But they provide essentially an additional buffering in this portion of the development, even though they're not technically involved in the subdivision. And then, from a circulation standpoint, the board was fairly clear at your last meeting that you did want to maintain the opportunity for one connection in the southern portion of the subdivision out to Evergreen Way, and we're continuing to show that, where the road, from a right-of-way and a constructed standpoint, would stop here in order to provide frontage to these lots, and we would leave this area open for the potential, again, if the Board of Selectmen proceeded with the triggering steps that the boards referenced, to take the roads around here, make them public, including this road. We've eliminated the possibility for a second connection here, and we've eliminated the possibility, and in its entirety, for any connections through the Cedar Crest Three neighborhood, through either Mayflower Circle or Daffodil Lane. So, those are the changes, mainly from a design and layout standpoint, that we think are consistent with the board's direction, and generally speaking, although I can't speak for them, a number of them are here tonight, and I'm sure they'll speak, we hope in the right direction that the neighbors and most of the abutters were hoping as well. So, that's the presentation. If the board is so inclined and thinks we're moving in the right direction, we would endeavor to, to hard-line engineer this over the next couple of weeks, resubmit amended plans. We don't have to resubmit the applications. They would just be amended plans, and be able to come back at your next meeting or two after, and in conjunction with the traffic review for a more detailed review, and then at that point, Mr. Pesci would have been able to complete his review as well. So, that would be our hope.
Sure.
If, if I can just add, not necessarily related to these changes, but just to give you an update, we did finalize our agreement with the Board of Selectmen last night on the sewer, on the sewer project, part of the project, as well as received building permits for Meadows One. So, that's underway.
Okay, good. Let's get you out. Leslie?
I have a question. I don't wanna shoot everyone with a laser, but, actually, we're not using. Right here, you talked about leaving that open for our regular connection, but it doesn't, the plan doesn't reflect the roadway layout extending through.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think, Leslie, just in the rush to get the graphics done, we didn't show the appropriate dash lines there, but the intent would be to keep a forty-foot-wide potential connection through there.
Board members? Do you have anything?
I think we're good.
I could add to what the audience, it's good.
So, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be over the public hearing at this point. If anyone wants to comment. Dave, go ahead. Thanks, Dave. I appreciate it. Focus.
Good evening, Dave Small, twenty-three Daffodil Lane. So, at your insistence in prior meetings, we did have discussions with the Richmond group to settle our higher-level contentions. I think we're moving in the right direction. We still haven't seen anything in writing yet to resolve those, but as the homeowners association, I think we're in favor of certainly the larger lots, the Daffodil-Mayflower lots facing the other way, and the ones on Evergreen being coming, larger lots and facing Evergreen. I think it's a good direction. We're still waiting on formality.
In format, we had a little delay, mostly because of the Board of Selectmen, the agreement with the Board of Selectmen on the sewer, and so we're now back on track, and at least tonight, I saw a rough draft of that agreement from our attorney. So, I think we'll be able to produce that relatively soon. But apologize for the delay, but we're kind of consumed with the sewer for a little while.
Got it.
It's a big thing to be consumed with.
Yep. So, anything else, Dave, or?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, good. Alright. Thanks.
Thank you.
Come on down.
Fairly simple question. I was just...
Sure, just to identify, because this gets televised.
Oh, David Trost.
Yeah, and what's your address, David, sorry?
Eleven Bluebird Lane in Nashaw.
Thank you, sir.
I was just interested, how do the D lots provide a buffer? Is there a designated buffer zone within those lots, or?
It's the size, so it's a zoning buffer. They were smaller before. They were five thousand-ish, probably a little less, and now they're ten thousand-plus.
So, a buffer in that there happens many lots.
Correct. And they're larger. Right. So, the density is less. It's a zoning buffer. Yeah, transition is probably a better word.
Yeah, truly. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Dave, final thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One point, I guess, to the gentleman's question, actually, that might shed some additional light. One of the things that we're actually going to propose specifically when we come back, and to the extent the board would not even necessarily require them, in conjunction with our anticipated agreement with the Cedar Crest Three Homeowners Association, we are going to self-impose restrictions that we presume the board would probably take forward and impose on us, but even if not, we're gonna self-impose some restrictions on secondary dwellings and duplex dwellings for the majority of the single-family subdivision closest to the two adjoining, adjacent neighborhoods. So, I think that will also help keep the buff, keep the density overall at a lower level and provide some additional buffering, if you will.
Great. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this? Board members, do you have anything else?
Not right now.
Alright, so, it looks like...
Do we need a special meeting for any of this stuff?
We need the traffic study.
Yeah.
Yeah, but do we need a special meeting for this big part, too?
Well, the, the traffic study, to a certain extent, is gonna start also relating with some of the stuff we're talking here as well, too, correct?
I would think so. I mean, our hope is, we know the peer review is well underway, if not completed at some level. We would hope that it would certainly confirm that the layouts and the land use planning principles that are behind this plan are solid, and that the direction the board seems to be going in is one that will support the findings that you ultimately would hope to make in an action.
I thought we were gonna have a special meeting for the whole thing.
Well, go ahead, Leslie.
So, Mr. Chairman, staff received some preliminary, well, a preliminary review from our consultant today, with some questions for, I think that's where we put that distributed.
Yeah.
So, that can be available somewhat quickly. I, I think that we should probably schedule a special meeting to talk about the traffic report and all of these applications together, because it's all tied together.
Okay. Approximate timeframe?
Anytime. I mean, the Clay Street application, we're not gonna be able to talk about, and I don't know that that's really integral to the other negotiations. So, you know, maybe later this month, maybe the week of the twenty-fourth.
We've gotta meet every day.
Do you? I mean, I've got the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh wide open.
The twenty-fifth, we don't have a CBC on the twenty-fifth.
You do.
Right back into this again.
Twenty-seventh is alright. It's the third day.
Into the...
I'll do whatever they want. I mean, I don't wanna be...
I can do the twenty-seventh.
What day is that?
Thursday, Thursday.
I think that'll work.
Sure.
Alright, so, do you want to do something earlier in the day, like about five or something?
Well, how many people can get off at five?
You can do that.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
No, same, that's fine with me. Twenty-seventh earlier.
I mean, would this be like the Mua thing and the Rizzo thing and the whole?
Yeah.
Like, is there gonna be people coming?
And I think everybody wants to be here for that.
So, we should be four, maybe, no?
They can't get out of work, so.
You know...
Sometimes it's better to just be early, if possible.
And truthfully, I don't think there's gonna be any decisions made at that meeting, so even if, even if it's earlier, two things, it's televised, and so there is, there is a recording of it at this point. And the second thing is that, again, there won't be necessarily any decisions made at that stage, so it'll continue on, so if people still have concerns, we'll still be at that meeting on, what is it, November fourteenth?
Why don't we do it five o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, and then we will try to get the consultants here on the twenty-seventh.
Perfect. Because that'll be another thing, too, if they get here, they're gonna need to get off.
Everybody hear that, five o'clock on October twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Thursday.
Thursday. Everything. Traffic, everything.
Probably downstairs, or you don't know where?
I'm not sure yet. I think, I technically will try for downstairs, but hopefully...
Yes, we will.
We'll find, we will find a place. I need, I need to give her incredible latitude here, since it is kind of in mid-stride, but usually there's not a lot going on at the end of the month.
Yes, so, I think we'll see November twenty-seventh at five o'clock, with four diagrams.
October.
We'll figure it out.
October, October twenty-seventh.
October twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Thursday, five P.M.
Already in the next month.
Yeah.
It's probably like Thanksgiving Day.
I'm still looking for Memorial Day, so the fact that it's October, I forget it.
Leslie, would be prudent for people just to call as well, too, to confirm final location for this?
Yes. It will be posted at least forty-eight hours in advance.
Alright.
So, check the website.
So, please check our website, and the other thing is, if you're still not sure at this point, just check in with staff. Like I said, we will really try to do it here, but I don't, I don't, I don't think any of us have a good answer for you, at least until the next twenty-four hours.
And I, I should add that we also have copies of the traffic report, if anyone would like, I know the town has one or two available, but we have them in the office. Give me a call, if I can print them out, or certainly have copies, so you can come by and take one before the meeting.
There you go. Okay. If there's nothing else, a motion would be appropriate to continue these?
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue all of these.
To our next meeting, which will be on...
On October twenty-seventh at five o'clock.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's how we do it. So, thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you have anything for them, too, I'm gonna ask you to meet them outside, because we've got two other orders that we need to finish up on. Thank you. So, that brings us to preliminary plan, which is eight-zero-two-four, Roy Kay and Carol Garrett, one fifty-four Cliff Road. Mr. Brescher?
Hello again. Good evening again.
And I've, did you get my text?
Yeah, thank you. For the applicant attorney, John Brescher, this was held over from last time because the board had questions about the sort of legal status of the easement that connects to Cliff Road, and we've clarified that it is a twenty-foot easement. When it was drafted in nineteen-seventy-four, provides access. We don't believe that expanding it and improving it would overburden it. So, I think that's where we are, because it's, there already services two dwellings. Plan on keeping it to two dwellings.
Any thoughts from staff?
So, Mr. Chairman, we talked about this a lot at the last meeting, and, you know, I think this is a very special situation.
Unique is a good word.
In that the easement has been in place for many, many years to provide access to this lot, and it's something the board can certainly consider, but I think that, you know, if you are willing to do that, we need to craft the decision for the preliminary rule of law that isn't gonna open the door to people creating easements to then subdivide, because it would be a major, major issue. So, you know, and I also think, you know, would the applicant be willing to restrict each lot to one dwelling?
Yes.
Would increase the density be a...
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
And in terms of restricting further A and R?
Well, we could have A and R, because it's an easement expense.
Right, there's no A and R here.
No additional lot improvements, no additional...
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And it's some specific language about why this was given special consideration.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's that same reason.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Board members, any questions?
I'm fine, I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Alright.
Motion to approve? I don't have to close the public hearing, I don't think.
We'll try to get something in much later.
Yeah. Okay, so that motion's being seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
So the chairman will send them to office?
Yes, ma'am, sure enough.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Last of the news, this is a sketch plan for Atlantic Development, 137 and 141 Orange Street. Gentlemen.
What do you hear?
Go on down.
We have some boards here to make a little large scale for the infancy of the meeting as we wind up here tonight. I'd like to present them. If you all know DJ McCann of Atlantic Development, and we at the present time have under agreement the properties at 137 and 141 Orange Street. And this has been placed now within the CMI district. We're looking at the feasibility of using the site for apartment buildings for up to 16 units on four lots, which is what the area and frontage of the property will, will allow with some creative plan work. And the, we wanted to generally discuss the project with the board and show you what we have in mind and get a general idea of whether you think we're headed in the right direction with regard to it. Obviously, the objective, once again, is to provide more housing, which we hope will be able to be rental apartment housing on this site, which has, which I think will be an improvement to the overall area and which is within the area in which the construction of apartment buildings will be encouraged by the new zoning. We have, we're before the HDC with regard to issues on the existing buildings on the site. We have engineering reports indicating that those buildings are in a very sad state indeed, and we think beyond the point where they would have any suitable place in Nantucket in the future. In other words, they are so bad that we are expecting that we'll be able to get permission for them to be demolished. And again, that's essential to our going forward with the project, but this is the general layout that we're proposing. DJ, do you want to explain the plan?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Dave. I'll give you a couple basics, then. I did bring some boards, because I know you've now moved to the PowerPoint, but we've got a couple of other things that we can show you on how we got to this, as well as some other options. But just briefly, the lot is, the combined lot's roughly about 27,000 square feet, and we're in the CMI district. We're trying to create, in the CMI district, there's ratios for units and bedrooms. Essentially, what we're trying to create are four lots with four units on each lot. Each unit would have two bedrooms. So that's kind of the math that we worked through. So it's a total, total of 16 units, and what we're trying to do is look at an initial massing approach. So if you don't mind, I'll kind of go old school here, switch to these, because I think we'll be a little bit more helpful. I'm going to want each one of these, some of these have Orange Street on the bottom, some of the tops, and I'm going to do is fill each board with Orange Street on the bottom, just to be consistent.
Yeah.
What it means is, in this case, the lettering is upside down.
Makes it, that's all right.
But with, with Orange Street on the bottom, we have Dave Street in this location, so basically, it's, it's this lot, which has a structure on it, and then it's this lot. It's kind of an upside down shape. It's probably the best way to put it. So that's the, that's the area that we're dealing with. What we're trying to do is create, again, we are trying to work with the density that's allowed under the zone, so you have to do these separate lots. Minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, but you know, when you kind of work through the lot area calculations to do the four, two-bedroom units, you need 6,000 square feet of lot area. So essentially, four times six is 24,000 feet, we've got 27,000 feet, so, so that's kind of the range that we're in. We're also trying to balance off lot coverage, because we have a 50% building coverage within the zone, so building footprints. And the other side of it is, you know, how do you build parking? So the two directions that we can kind of go with parking are, the one that you see up there, which is basically, I'll show it here and play it a little bit more. We've got Orange Street, and what we're really trying to do is create this building footprint here and put a significant amount of parking under the building. So one approach is try to get a bunch of the parking under the building. The way we do that is, Orange Street is at, at this point, about elevation 14. It comes up to about elevation 16 here, and then around the corner, you're up to about elevation 18 on Dave Street. So coming in at elevation 14, the idea in this concept is, you come into the site, you drop down, and then you turn, and you go under this building. So the actual parking would be down at about elevation 10. So it's about four feet below the road. But then what we would do is, would lift the first floor of the building up, so the first floor of the building is at elevation 20. So it's 10 feet above the parking, so it's about six feet above the road at the low point here, and it's about four feet above the road at this point. So similar to, you know, certain structures that you do see in this corridor, they have that first floor lifted up.
Yeah.
At the same time, for people that might be living here, you know, having that, have that first floor lifted up, kind of looking over the traffic is, is a nice thing. So that's kind of one approach. The bulk of the parking, we've actually got under this structure. We also have basically two units in the back, and units over here. Now, the one thing that doesn't show up in this kind of three dimensionally is, what we do have on the first floor is basically units 1, 2, 3, and 4. Then we have this opening, so the vehicles can get through, and then we have units 7, 7 and 13 on the first floor here. Above that first floor, that's where the second floor plus the roof system. So in the second floor, we'd like to, they have an internal stairway in the roof system. So those units go directly on top, you know, 8, 9, 10, and 11. And then, in this portion of the site, we actually wanted to have two units that would be above, above that area. So you'd actually drive through the building. We haven't got to the architectural side of this, but just more in a massing standpoint, drive through, and then you'd have these. One of the benefits of putting all the parking down, you wouldn't have to put an elevator in the building at that point. So the elevator would serve units on the first floor, units on the second floor, although the second floor would have that internal staircase to, to an upper floor. So, so this is really kind of, that's where to express it, more of a massing study, trying to get the units to work. It also allowed us to take kind of what needed to be a fairly creative approach to do the subdivision, and particularly, the biggest challenge in the subdivision of this lot is that regularity formula. That's where it gets really challenging. So with that, we, again, we had the structure principally, most of the parking under, we do have some parking at grade in the back of these units, the units would be above, so there'd be two units back here, and then some overflow parking. And we generally conform, I think we've got either 31 or 32 spaces, so two spaces per unit. So that was one approach. The other one, which we recently worked on, and we weren't able to get to on PowerPoint, is, this is where we get to, the lettering's upside down, the, the, to be consistent. This is more what I'll call kind of the townhouse concept, where basically, you come into the site, and all the units have the parking in the back. So this is all, the site, you rise up in grade, you'd be able to exit here. But what happens is, and you can see, to make this plan work, we start to look at the number of parking spaces here, as well as all these garages. It's your classic massing, where you're trying to figure out how to make the parking work to satisfy the two units, two parking spaces per unit. And then each one of these is basically 16 feet wide, it's about 40 feet long. So you end up with principally parking on the, on the first floor, a little bit of space, you know, maybe a small room in front of it that architecturally, you could do something along the streetscape. But then on top of that, what you're looking for is really two levels of living, plus something in the attic area, you know, within, all, again, within that 40-foot height limit. So, but it, it, on the, clearly in the back, it would be fairly repetitive with a lot of the garages. You know, architecturally in the front, it may be ways to address it, so it doesn't look like it's a bunch of, of units. But what this does is, now all the parking is essentially either at grade or renting garages at grade. So, so those are, you know, the, as much as we try, now the challenge with this plan is, we can't make the regularity formula work. And part of it is, when I get to the, to figure the regularity formula, we may be able to, you can work these out. This is kind of a color diagram of the regularity formula for this building over here. And the way it works is, look at this blue line underneath. This is one lot, and it has the two units that are on the first floor, and then the two units that are above it. So that's four units. We're drawing the lot line right to the building because there's a zero setback.
Yeah.
This lot has two units on the first floor, two units on the upper floors. This is the creative lot. It has the two units that are on the second floor and above, so we've got the hole in the building here, and then the other two units are back here. And then this lot has basically two units at ground level and two units above. So what happens with the regularity formula is, you're trying to get the frontage along the street, you're trying to keep that formula to work with the five, the minimum lot area is 5,000 square feet, so the closest 5,000 square feet to the frontage has to conform to the regularity formula. And then to meet the 6,000-foot lot area and coverage, you need, you need extra land area. But the extra land area can be these kind of funny shapes that run through the back of the property.
More called fog traps, we'll call them.
Something else.
So, so we're able to make it work for this. You know, maybe with some more creativity, we can, we can figure out a way to make it work for this one, which is, you know, kind of the at-grade parking and the, and the townhouse concept. We weren't successful so far, because we really had to get four units back here, but maybe we can figure out a way to, to reconfigure it. You know, what we're trying to get some sense of feedback on is, is more the approach of, should we be trying to, say, in this instance, get most of the parking under the building, and it's, use some of the creativity to do that? You know, one approach to this that came up, you know, maybe we can, as opposed to, I mean, there's a couple of approaches. This is essentially, you know, a large structure with, with a hole in it. That's one approach. Maybe the structure can be broken up. One of the other thoughts we had, which we haven't shown on here, but I was actually just sketching it up myself, is, you know, what if we, Dave, Dave Street today is a little bit confusing. Clearly, on this end, you know, it's, it's one-way in this direction, and it's signed that way. We're not sure in this part of Dave Street whether people use it as a two-way road or a one-way road.
One-way.
It used to be two-way a long time ago.
So, but one thought would be, if we actually entered, instead of trying to enter off of Orange Street, if we entered this building off of Dave Street, you know, especially we've got this angle on Dave Street, maybe we could do a widening and make this end of Dave Street two-way for these properties, but then essentially enter under the building here. And maybe we actually put the parking all under, create a break in the building, so from the streetscape, it actually looks like two buildings, but we actually have kind of a large parking area underneath it by entering off of Dave's, you know. Not having the entrance on Orange Street, to some degree, might, might help us with the architecture and what's going on.
So no, if you eliminate the Orange Street one.
Yeah, eliminate Orange Street, yep. Come, come in here. The reality is, if we, you know, if we have, you know, 16 units here, and people are coming in and out of Dave Street, to try to then send everybody in this direction to Dave Street, they're probably not going to do it. So maybe this, maybe this could be a two-way piece of Dave Street, and then it's one-way from here back.
That's a big fight. I would, what about making the entrance one-way in?
And one-way out?
And one-way out. That's how I was thinking you were doing it, because you didn't say anything about that yet.
Well, I guess-
Make the layout, make it narrower, to pick up some dirt.
You could do that. My, my only concern is, if, if everyone's accessing on Dave Street, to assume that-
They're going to go up the street.
You, but do you suspect people are going to try to get on this way anyway?
No, not if they live here.
No, I think what you should do is come in from Dave Street and out onto Orange Street. You've got much more of a visibility, there's no hill, there's no nothing. And it would make more sense to go, because then you don't have, you're not stuck on Dave Street, you're going into Dave, no matter what you're doing, you're coming in. So you don't have to go all the way up and around, you come right back out on Orange, and go wherever the hell you want.
I just think about Stop and Shop and Pleasant, it's better, it's going to be better down the road, but that's just-
Not right now.
I think one-way in or out, whether we do what Linda said, or what I said, whatever, it doesn't matter what I said, you know what I mean. One-way in or out on the Orange Street, not two. I think that that's a key to whatever we do.
And the other thing, too, is if we're going to-
Or maybe something, like, something like this.
Yeah, if you're going to talk about Orange Street, though, I, I think when you're coming out of it, though, it's, it's going to be restricted turn.
Right.
You know, I, because what I, what I don't want to, because how many units are we talking about here?
16, 16.
16 units, okay, and how many bedrooms?
32.
32?
32.
I just want, I just want to be clear, okay?
They're not blocking any traffic up.
I'm, I'm concerned about that, because as we've infinitely seen beforehand, the moment you start directing traffic across the counterflow of traffic, don't work. It creates another traffic nightmare.
They're not blocking anybody, though. They're blocking their own little driveway thing.
Yeah.
Like sitting in the middle of a road, blocking, trying to turn left or right. There's no reason why they can't go left, anymore than anybody coming out of the Commons or West Creek or anybody else. They just wait in their own little driveway, as opposed to blocking people on West Creek trying to take a left.
There's no way for you to connect to that.
That's going to drive them back out to the Rotary and back up Dave Street again. That doesn't make any sense.
Don't, don't we have plans for bike paths along Orange Street?
They could sit there all day and start here before they come out.
Along this side, yeah.
What's that side?
Yeah, in fact, you know, we were hoping to, one of the things we'd like to do is along Orange Street, wide into at least like an eight-foot sidewalk. You know, there's a lot of people walk past this.
We'd probably have to.
Probably get you for a bike path or something else, yeah.
But let, let's talk about Dave Street for a minute. It, I think you've heard from the board, and I agree, that that needs to be one-way. The moment you make that two-way, especially when people are living out of the box at night, I don't want to think what that's going to start to look at. The other thing, too, is that somehow, at least from my perspective, you need to limit access into your subdivision right at that point, because you're going to wind up making, becoming the parking lot for the chicken blocks.
Okay.
And I think that's something you're going, you're going to be, you know?
Depends on what concept he goes with.
Yeah, but I think nonetheless-
The garage one, people aren't going to be going into a garage.
Yeah, you know what?
It's my parking. They're under the, under the structure, and it's your parking, probably doors or something.
I understand, but you know what?
But with doors. They're not going to be parking there.
Human nature, human nature will dictate what happens in there. And believe me, y'all thought that Stop and Shop parking lot was going to resolve from people not parking across the street and stuff.
Oh, we knew that.
We do it to this day for a convenience factor.
Yeah, but there's no parking spaces for them to park in, and they all park in the Commons.
Don't make a difference.
Thousands of them park in the Commons.
Does it make a difference if someone leaves at that point, there's a space there?
There isn't, it's under the building.
It's under the building, but what difference-
Nobody's driving under somebody's building.
Moving in, I have a question.
That's not what happens.
I just want to bring up something.
Then, nobody does that.
I agree.
Can I just bring, like, do we have new members now? Steve's left, but John's new in theory, all right? Let's just bring something up. The gas-
You're still new.
The gas station.
20 years later, you're still new.
Leslie, the gas station in Cumberland Times.
Yes.
Okay. When we were working through that process, the complaints about the exit, the old Stop and Shop, you know, drive, entrances and stuff, were all coming up in the conversation, but I remember, it was me that actually said it, that's going to be moving. Like, this is, this area is old, and it's going to be different. Okay? Marine Lumber, all of this stuff is going to change at some point. This, so we need to look at this, Barry, in my opinion, like we kind of looked at, at, you know, Denny Dias' old gas station, and that land of his was just a piece of nothing, okay? And now it's all finished. We were looking at it as, everything else is going to be changing, so we're the new guy. That's how I'm looking at this. And that's Peter Gomes' house, I remember Gomes gulfing with Peter Gomes, God almighty. And, and, and this is changing, okay? So you are like the new thing, other than the Commons, I mean, you know, for, for the most part. So I don't worry about what's going on now, I'm worried about what's going to be going on later. So the bike path issue, the sidewalk issue, you've got, this is going to be kind of like packed circle with Mid Island, though. So I don't think the traffic is going to be an issue at all. I think people are going to be walking to work, a lot of them. Not everybody that lives there is going to walk to work, I'm not saying that. But I think that, that the reason this is going here, the reason we changed this opening, is because this is the new downtown. Am I right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and they're saying, you know?
No, the one thing I'm looking at is, and maybe it's not correct, to correct the look at it like this, I'm curious what the HDCs-
Well, that's-
We're, this is underground garage.
That's why I said-
This is, I know, this is like condos in Florida, so I'm, I'm just saying, before, I mean, it's kind of a, I'm open to anything, but I'm just curious.
Well, that's my comment before, and DJ knows this, is to split the 112 feet into two structures and move the entrance in between the two buildings. And that way, he's got more flexibility with two smaller buildings, same units. The two smaller buildings have been broken up.
I have no opinion about it, I'm on the HDC.
I think that, that's my only-
But you're thinking about it.
Of course you are. I'm thinking, the first thing, while this is cutting in.
That's my only comment, is to split them up into two buildings, that's it.
Let me ask you a question, is, are any of these going to be designated for affordable housing?
We haven't got to that yet.
Not, this is, this is for David.
No, all right, 25%.
Because, what?
No, he doesn't have to do 25%.
I'm just curious, I just need to ask, because if you're going to start plotting-
Yes, because he's not planning on that.
So, the application that you would be submitting is for apartment buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not for the workforce, maybe rental housing.
Okay.
And, and there, there is a bonus for that, but we don't have enough land area to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
You've got enough units, you can't get enough in.
Now, what I'm, what I'm trying to say though is, before you start including, whoever moves in there is gonna wind up walking to work at this point. You know, there's, there's a certain financial threshold that may dictate a whole respect on how, how people move in and out of there.
That's why we, we haven't tried to look to compromise the parking, you know, under the zoning, it's one space.
These could end up, cars packed all year, all year round.
So we are trying to make sure that we accommodate the parking.
Well, I see what you're doing now. You're trying to make the cars protected for seasonal residence.
Well, if you look, you, you just look at the footprint of vehicles, it takes up a lot of space.
It doesn't leave much space, yeah.
No, that makes sense now that I have said it.
Probably doesn't hurt with the height. You might even get some water views there, so.
Yes, they know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Now, do you have to meet, do you have to meet the setback of the interior lot lines for your buildings?
Zero, zero. Zero all around.
So, but you can't go, you can't straddle a lot of lines from here.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, so lot line can go right through the building.
Like thirteen, fifteen, seventeen Orange Street.
No, no, I understand that it could be a common wall, but couldn't actually go through the middle of the building?
Well, it would have to go through a wall within the building.
Right.
Each unit would have to be on one side. You're gonna be seeing a bunch of it.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay, that's fine.
The way you build these units, that you typically have two separate walls, and then on the sound, for sound protection.
Yeah.
You don't actually have a-
But that's the lot line, that's your setback.
It's actually, right.
I got it.
So, a few other things. And I wanna kind of run this through Leslie. Improvements to Dave Street, Orange Street, and potential for bike path on the other side. Those, those are the three things that now start coming to mind as we look at this. So I, I'd like to kind of hear your thoughts on those.
I think a widening of the sidewalk on Orange Street, definitely, and they did that from a compass roads, and that's, and that's pedestrian.
Continue what they already did.
Yeah, they're kind of, they treated the widest, so we picked it wider.
Yeah.
Definitely. And, you know, again, like Matt said, this is an area that is ripe for redevelopment. So, you know, the sidewalk on Dave Street, and how wide did you?
I think we showed five feet here, but I mean, we can, we're flexible with that. We could wrap something around, at least heading in this direction. It got a little challenging right here, because this is a post.
There's zero.
It's literally right here, so what happens is, it kind of gets, we tried, you know, we worked with it a tight layout, but we tried to at least get the five-foot sidewalk, you know, up to this border.
And, yeah, I thi, I think that's fine though, because sometimes we've just gotta deal with things on a very incremental basis. So maybe the House proves a barrier today, but, you know, we're, we're there and looking at, trying to do something in the future.
We, we, we'd like to get these if we can, so we're not there yet, so.
Got it.
What's the layout of Dave Street? Is it a public road?
Yes. It's not forty. It's not forty.
I think it's like twenty.
Ah.
Well, it's only paved, well, a lot of times DJ, you'll see a road that's paved at twenty, but it's laid out to forty. But I don't believe that's a forty-foot layout, because everybody is on the street.
That's why I asked, because the improvements are gonna be eliminated without some kind of easement issue situation.
No, he's put the sidewalk on his property.
Taking of Dave Street, I don't think so. I think it's-
Very private?
No, I think, I'm wondering if it is a seventeen ninety-nine street.
Which would be thirty feet, twenty feet?
Variable width.
Variable width.
Width, yeah.
Like New Lane, South.
Where a lot of these streets in Mid Island on the nineteen thirty-eight don't even show up. Hooper Farm is dirt.
Yeah.
This is probably that old, because these three houses here were the older houses in the neighborhood, except for the ones down on Cherry Street. And so Dave, I remember seeing on some really old layouts.
Okay, so are there-
Nothing else.
Public amenities, possible contribution to the bike path and bike lane?
I mean, whatever we can do for that, I mean, that's, we haven't done it yet before.
Like you said, you know, the sidewalk on Dave Street, I mean, we might need an easement to maintain the five feet.
No, he does it on his own property.
You're gonna do it on your own property?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, let's, we'll-
As much as he can.
We'll, we'll put it on our property. I mean, we'll just figure out where it should be physically, and it goes back and forth, we're happy to then-
Gift it.
carve off the property, whatever. We, we did that with the, I think we did the bank.
Yeah, you pulled it in.
That's cool.
Yep. Oh, that's good. And then the flushing and all that, like they did at the bank. Oh, beautiful.
Are you just making a career run on Antucket now?
Yeah, I mean, overall, I think this is a great plan. I think that-
Yep, good location.
That's a great addition to the Mid Island. That's sort of, I think, what the vision of the board was, and you want to create that use.
They'll make a, they'll make a big difference in that area.
And also point out that you may recall in the R T G housing study, two-bedroom units were the units that were needed the most.
But these aren't gonna be affordable units.
No.
No.
We just need two bedrooms.
I wouldn't expect it to be.
More housing stuff.
And it's rental. But I don't think, you're not renting them year-round, right? I mean-
Is, yeah, what, what is the vision there?
Our, our goal would be to rent them year-round.
Year-round, okay.
I mean, like, obviously, we've got a lot of work to get through.
Yeah, this is a huge project. What about the engineering of all this crazy pack underneath? Is that a lot of weight issues with this? Not really. But it's not gonna be anything.
No, in fact.
Just thinking about the soil, there's not like water issues up here. This isn't-
Oh, yeah, this is-
No, they're not in the A-zone. They're not in the A-zone. They're outside the A-zone.
What I'm talking about is just in general.
Get a little bit of a handle on it with your buddy building here, that has, that has basement in it.
It does?
The, uh, the hundred-year flood zone, I believe it's at nine in this location, so that's why we're roughly looking at four to ten.
Okay.
And if you look, if you think about, um-
I had a few people calling me-
There's a couple of other buildings that are out of the ground, one next to Foods, his other building.
I, I know we did the bank back here, the soils aren't necessarily great in this area, they're pretty variable, so I think that could also lead to drainage issues and everything. We haven't done the soil testing, we haven't seen. Actually, believe it or not, one of these houses does have a basement that appears to have been reasonably dry. So that's about the only indicator we have.
Oh, that's great. You never know. That's good stuff.
The difference between the parking under as opposed to the, is there any thoughts or feedback?
I like the under stuff.
So long as it's camouflaged. From a, from an HCC, I gotta go there, guys.
Yeah, I know.
From an HCC perspective, so long as they're camouflaged, and they don't like, like it's in Florida where everything's elevated, and they're driving under their houses. I mean, on, so long as on the Orange Street side, it looks like they're just regular houses. Dave Street side, regular houses. And it would have a wooden door on it, or whatever, barn doors, or whatever.
I mean, this could be on West Creek. You know what I'm saying? With what John did, this could be there. Same idea.
John Keats, back to that again.
No, but it's true.
I already told him that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Part of the thought is, you know, with the foundation, parking above the ground, you know, just to kind of the brick painted black, which you tend to see everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I like, we like the front of the street and the stuff in the back. I mean, that's what is gonna happen from now on, so this is good.
So what we're, our goal was to really try to go from here, try to come up with some concepts, and then try to bounce this off the HCC, and try to get a feel as to what their thoughts may be.
They've gotta be able to get rid of the buildings at the HCC in this first place.
They're not that old, they're just-
Yes, they are. They're over a hundred years old, so I just, I have to-
But they're, it's just the, I mean, you don't feel like you're gonna fall for this.
No, they're both that age. Kind of bizarre.
How are the buildings schematically set back from the lot line? Because it's a green strip between-
Like, believe it or not, the lot line is right here, so that's right on the edge of it. What we tried to hold is about, about an eight-foot sidewalk and about a five-foot strip for plantings. So it kind of varies a little bit. You know, we set the sidewalk on curb line with eight feet, and then I believe we went five feet off that for some plantings on the fond, along the foundation. So in some cases, we're right out, in some cases, we're set back.
Okay, so if that's in the right way, would you agree to maintain the plantings?
Sure, yeah.
Well, if you're gonna raise, how far are you gonna raise the grade, you said?
Well, on, on this one-
The grade change is going up the hill.
Yeah, so what happens is, the grade's about fourteen here, about sixteen here, that's about-
I meant to build the-
To build-
The building, you said you're gonna have it six feet higher than existing grade?
We could be five to six feet above existing grade at this point, and maybe three to four feet, feet it down.
Right, and you only have a five-foot setback, so you're gonna have a pretty healthy slope there, right?
Well, no, the idea would be that the foundation would be, maybe is that exposed effect, like the brick that's painted, that's painted black?
Oh, oh, okay, you, you said that, I didn't, I didn't pick up on that, okay. Yeah, 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 okay.
So, I mean-
No, no, you understand that.
I like this. I like the eight-foot, and, you know, we got a good survey on Orange Street, right? What's the layout of Orange Street? It sounds like you've got that already figured out.
Yeah, we've got that surveyed, actually.
So you're gonna be able to really make a nice sidewalk here?
Yeah, no, we've got, uh, yeah.
That's great.
No, I think, like you said, the sidewalks at the bank seem to work.
Yeah.
You know, about eight, ten feet, people can actually walk on it. There's, it seems to be a lot of pedestrian flow through that area.
You have to remove people walking with stuff, you know, and that's the key. I'm good. Great. HCC, good luck to you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Really appreciate it to be down.
Ease it into this underneath thing.
No, he's not there yet. He's just trying to get rid of the buildings.
That's an idea.
He's just trying to get rid of the buildings first.
Right.
That's the big deal.
When you plan on filing an application?
I, I'm feeling, would like to be back with an application in December if possible.
Do you feel like you've got some clear direction from us, at least, just to kind of-
And I'm sure, whatever we start with, it'll work its way through the process anyway. It's good, it's a good place to start.
Leslie, just, just one last thing. On Orange Street, if they're proposing eight feet, and we've got something going on on the other side of the bike path, is that, can you just look at that?
Yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering if it may be worth bringing the sidewalk in a bit, just to maybe give you some more space on the other side.
For the bike.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wanting to look at it, that's all. I might be barking at the wrong tree on it, but again, here's an opportunity. Thanks. All right, thank you gentlemen. Thank you. All right. I think we're good.
Don't forget, town meeting's on Monday.
Town meeting, right?
Town meeting.
That's right, town meeting. You may be square.
Six P M.
No, 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 I didn't know the day. I knew it was coming soon. I didn't know what day it was.
Well, they posted.
What day is today?